I'd like to call this meeting to order. Be it resolved, Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Under Section 2.23711, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Under that, it would be one form of Blacksburg Middle School property. In addition, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees or employees of any public body, adjustment and appeals board, board of equalization, community services board, and planning mission. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second with the clerk please call to roll.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clough?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye. We are in closed meeting.
I like this.
I'd like to have a motion to come out of closed meeting. Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to come out of closed meeting with the clerk please call to roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Clough?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second with the clerk please call to roll.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Clough?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next item on our agenda is our invocation, and we will observe a moment of silence and to reflect on the business at hand, and after that, we will be led in the pledge by County Administrator Mr. Craig Metz.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
We don't have any presentations on our agenda tonight, so we'll move on to delegations. We have a delegation tonight. Citizens preserving Floyd County CPFC Mountain Valley Pipeline, Elizabeth McComman, will make a presentation on CPF's efforts to block Mountain Valley proposed natural gas pipeline from West Virginia through seven Virginia counties, including Montgomery and Floyd.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Elizabeth McComman. I live at 1400 Crestview Drive in Blacksburg. I raised my children in Floyd County. I lived a few years in Giles County and have been in Blacksburg for over 20 years. So I have been following you all's career, and I thank you for the work that you've done Mr. Brown mentioned the Preserve Floyd County. We're having difficulty naming ourselves, because I represent a delegation that is forming a regional committee. Presently, we're calling ourselves Preserve the New River Valley. And so we're trying to reach out to all of the counties that are involved that this pipeline will go through. So if you hear me refer to Preserve the New River Valley, you'll know that we're really preserving Floyd and Montgomery and Giles as well. EQT Corporation is an integrated -- what you doing here?
That's right.
No, that's -- oh, is that one? Okay, thanks. The EQT Corporation, according to their press release, is an integrated energy company with emphasis on Appalachian area, natural gas production, gathering, and transmission. And transmission is what we're concerned about here tonight. They're a leader in the use of advanced horizontal drilling technology. Their partner, NextEra Energy, describes itself as a leading clean energy company with consolidated revenues of approximately $15 billion. They generate clean, emission-free electricity from eight commercial nuclear power plants in Florida, New Hampshire, Iowa, and Wisconsin. This is the partnership that intends to build this line. This is a picture of an exploding, derailed petroleum train in South Dakota. This happened last year, and we have permission from the Commissioner of the county in which it happened to use his photograph. It's this kind of event that makes underground natural gas pipelines so attractive. The U.S. Department of Transportation has provided us with information concerning the costs to insurance companies and to counties. There have been five, 1,623 significant events, meaning those events which lost more than $50,000. We're not even talking about the small events. So for a period of about 10 years, they have tracked this activity, and there have been $6,700,000 in losses, and we're not sure if these losses are incurred by the insurance companies, the counties themselves, but it's a significant amount of money, including the injuries and the deaths. This is over a period of about 10 years. We request that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors have EQT and its partner reveal the extent of their insurance coverage for damage in these kinds of terrible explosions, and discern whether or not this would be sufficient to take care of the county's needs, their insurance coverage. Also, we would like to know what their insurance coverage would be during construction, as well as operation of the pipeline. So that is the first resolution we would ask you to consider making. We have landowners with us tonight who will present in greater depth our greater concerns for them. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is going to be the approving body for this interstate pipeline, not the State Corporation Commission. So we have a lot of eminent domain to deal with, and that may be used by public service corporations like the Mountain Valley Pipeline. They cannot, however, condemn land of another public service subdivision or body such as a town, a state, or federal property. So we're concerned about the loss of tax revenues when land is devalued by the pipeline's existence, people being unable to develop their property or resell it. I guess you can see for yourself what this is. It's a construction of -- and it will be enormous, at least 200 feet of a right-of-way. And our landowners will speak a little further to that in a few minutes. We would like the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors to deny EQT and its partner access to surveying any property, yours or ours, until they provide a detailed map of the proposed pipeline route. It seems to be very difficult for any one of us to find out what that will be, and perhaps they haven't made up their mind yet. This pipeline that you saw the picture of will cross railroads, highways, waterways, your property perhaps, mine, and we're very concerned about what that's going to do to the tax base and the difficulty in reselling property later. So what are the benefits to our county? We hear about jobs. We've seen a recent piece in the paper about economic benefits. It's our understanding that most of the jobs will go to interstate regional specialists. And if we're looking for cleaner, cheaper energy, we're going to pay a huge price for it. The price of natural gas is rising daily as we speak, and the cost of cleanups are part of the cost for this natural gas, which they keep telling us is cleaner and cheaper. There will be no fracking in Montgomery County, but other states have been asked to accept the importation of fracking wastewater. Two billion gallons of wastewater from the fracking industry is generated every day, two billion gallons. And it's entirely possible that, like the state of New Jersey, we might be asked to accept fracking wastewater from other areas. And we would like for you to resolve to deny importation of any of this fracking wastewater. These numbers speak for themselves. Other states, other counties are considering passing resolutions forbidding the construction of natural gas pipelines through their boundaries and borders. We would like you to do the same. This is a chart that was brought to us by Dave Robe, emeritus, professor emeritus of physics at Virginia Tech. He's a wonderful researcher, and I'm glad he -- I'm sure he would be glad to speak to many of the facts that he has uncovered. It looks like the life span of this pipeline is going to be very short. Some people say 15 years, even 20 years or 30 years. Is this long enough for this kind of investment in risky business-making and the cost to our citizens in our county? We would ask that you pass a resolution requesting that -- requiring that EQT and its partner meet with you, because we have so many questions from them. We can ask them for facts, we can ask them for information, but we would like to ask you to have their bodies in this room answering your questions. And I'd like now to turn this over to one of our landowners who's going to talk further.
Ma'am, Supervisor Creed has a quick question for you.
One quick question back on about the second or third slide. I believe you -- well, I know you said six million. I believe that's six billion.
I meant to say six billion.
You said six million, but I noticed that and I thought that's a big difference.
Yeah.
My name is Angela Stanton. This is my husband, Will Stanton. We live at 2595 Spaulding Road in Christiansburg, Virginia, actually in the county of Montgomery. We're here tonight to represent the views of landowners. We have been contacted by the company, Co Surveying, who's representing EQT and NextEra, and we want to share with you what we see as the impact on our lives if we become a voluntary host to this pipeline, to compressor stations that are associated with the pipeline, as well as the dangers that are caused by the pipeline. This picture Elizabeth showed you a few minutes ago, this actually is a 42-inch pipe. This is the size of the pipe that's being proposed for the Mountain Valley Pipeline. As you can see, the construction right-of-way for this project is 150 feet or more, and never more will anything be in that right-of-way upon completion of the project. After construction, the right-of-way that they maintain is anywhere from 50 to 75 feet. Lots of times when these projects occur, people assume that the pipeline is simply going in open property. This picture clearly displays the proximity to homes. This pipeline is literally within feet of this home. And when you have these right-of-ways, what happens is that you lose your ability to plant trees, to put up buildings, to put in sidewalks. And unlike electrical right-of-ways where you can put a tractor, drive a four-wheeler under them, you do not have that ability on a gas right-of-way. It's a completely different type of right-of-way. You're the landowner, but you then have to go and ask the company, may I use my property? And in most cases, the answer to that is no. And because this is an interstate pipeline, it's going to have to go through FERC approval, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and if people do not agree and it's approved, they can use eminent domain to take our property. Saloo Conservancy has two conservation easements on its property, and a lot of people have misnomered that if you're under a conservation easement, that your land is not susceptible. We do know that Saloo has been contacted for potential surveying to their property. And Saloo's a very special place, almost 400 acres, ecologically diverse.
There are existing right now 200 research plots on the property, and they're permanently there. People are conducting research. If something went across that property, it would destroy the research that's there. There's also very endangered species on the property. Anything coming across there endangers that, endangers future research. And if you've not been out to Saloo Conservancy, you really ought to go out there. It's part of our heritage, I'm very proud of it.
This is a picture that looks a lot more like the topography we've been dealing with in our county if a pipeline goes through. This pipeline is one-fourth the size of what's being proposed for the Mountain Valley Pipeline. The reality is, there are not pipelines of this magnitude in the type of terrain that we have in the New River Valley. You look at this right-of-way, this is forested right-of-way, which much of the right-of-way they'd be talking about in our county would be forested. It would forever be deforested, because trees would not be allowed to grow back on that. And you also have to keep in mind the topography. Much of our land in Montgomery County and the surrounding counties is based on karst topography. We live on top of limestone, sinkholes, lots of underground waterways, and we know that it's like literally putting a pipeline on top of Swiss cheese. It's going to be incredibly dangerous activity to do. And there's many consequences from just the pipeline itself. It reduces our use of the land, it lowers land value, and it reduces our ability as landowners to sell, subdivide, or develop our land. We already know from our friends in Nelson County that realtors have reported that people that have had contracts on property there have pulled their contracts because of the proposed pipeline going through in that area. There are also the restrictions to the right-of-way, as I just discussed. And the reality is, we would own the land, we continue to pay taxes on it, but we really couldn't do much with that land that was taken over as easement from the utility. The pipeline can also harm the groundwater for those of us on wells, which are many of us in the county, as well as contaminate the watershed into the New River, which is the water source for the majority of not just county residents, but residents throughout the New River Valley. The pipeline, its construction, and its restricted right-of-way would negatively impact economic development within Montgomery County. You as a Board of Supervisors have a land use plan going into 2030 and 2040, and I think you need to know, how is this going to impact the intended use of land throughout the county?
This is a compressor station. About every 40 to 100 miles, compressor stations like this have to be constructed to keep the pressure within the pipe. They don't really know what it's going to be like around here going up and down mountainous terrain. It could be as much as every 10 miles you have to put a compressor station. This compressor station here has five generators. Each generator is 1,340 horsepower. That runs 24/7. It generates noise, it generates fumes. As you can see here, there's a plant, these plants are built, they have six-foot chain-link fences around them, and if you go on the property, you're required to have personal protection equipment, hearing protection, eye protection, foot protection, so forth. The ones in the bottom right, that's the compressors, the generators. And if you have a generator backup at your house, you know what they sound like. Just imagine these at 1,340 horsepower each, running 24/7 near your property.
And then, of course, there is the potential for a catastrophic event. As Elizabeth mentioned, in 2008, Appomattox, Virginia, the pipeline failed just before 8:00 a.m. It immediately killed our Level 2 houses and injured people, and more than 100 homes in a quarter-mile area were damaged within the blast. And this is from a much smaller pipeline than what we're talking about for Mountain Valley. This is a more recent accident that occurred in San Bruno, California. Eight people died, 38 homes were destroyed. You can actually see the proximity of the line to the houses. In this case, they initially thought it was an earthquake. It took them a while to actually figure out it was a natural gas explosion, but it registered that high on the Richter scale. The explosions and destruction at Appomattox and San Bruno were said to have been caused by the aging of high-pressure natural gas lines. These are not the traditional gas lines that most people are accustomed to coming throughout their neighborhoods. This is at much higher pressure. The accidents in both of these cases were with a 30-inch pipeline. And what my husband is holding up to you, that is what a 30-inch pipeline diameter looks like. The pipeline that's being proposed for the Mountain Valley Pipeline is significantly larger, 42 inches in diameter. Your children could walk through standing on this pipeline. It's one of the largest ever. And according to EQT, the Mountain Valley Pipeline is expected to provide at least 2 billion cubic feet of natural gas per day. What Will is holding up now is one cubic foot. So that just represents a cubic foot. 23,000 of these would be going through the pipeline per second, if you can try to visualize that.
Per second, 23,000 of these per second. And each one has 1,000 BTU potential, and it's 23 million then, per second.
As landowners, we don't want a pipeline to cross our land with the potential of creating catastrophic damage to our homes, our families, our lives, our animals, our property. And so what's in it for the NRV to become a host for the Mountain Valley Pipeline and its compressors?
You can see here, this is the existing Transco pipeline, and that's compressor station -- there's my mouse there, is compressor station 165. Up until now, the gas has gone from the south, from Texas and along the coast and the Gulf, up to the northern area, high demand in Maryland, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York. Because of the Marcellus shale being fracked, pipeline companies like Transco see a cheaper source of their gas. And so now they're asking for gas lines to be built with a cheaper source of gas than they're getting from the Gulf. And the proposed Mountain Valley gas line will start in this Marcellus shale, will go down to 165. You have to keep in mind that this pipeline is in existence and has been. So what this is going to do is provide a different source for Transco rather than the gas coming from the Gulf, which is much more expensive. Doesn't mean we're going to have any more gas, it's just different gas. And once it gets down here, it's going to go both directions.
Construction for this project will take up to four years. During the construction process, transportation will be disrupted throughout the New River Valley, which includes I-81, routes 11, 114, and 460.
So can you imagine a 42-inch pipe going across I-81? Is it going to be scratched at the bottom of the bridge, to the side of the bridge? It's got to get across I-81. It's also got to go across 11, 460, and 114. It's either got to go under it, or it's going to go over it, but utilities are all around there. Something has to shift for this to go under.
And we believe it will certainly be a deterrent to tourism. It will pass through the Appalachian Mountains, cross the Appalachian Trail, as well as the Blue Ridge Parkway. And the economic benefits of this project keep being touted about employment. And the reality is, any employment that's going to be attracted here will be temporary at best. Historically, these projects have shown that they bring in workers from out of state who travel along with these projects across the country.
They're skilled pipeline workers, welders. They know how to operate that heavy equipment to lift up and place the pipe where it needs to go. These are not just somebody who's going to walk down to the corner and ask you, can you come down here and help me put a 42-inch pipe in your property?
EQT, NextEra, and Transco, the reality is, they will make profit on the sale, billions of dollars in profit on the sale of natural gas, primarily outside of the state of Virginia, not to the New River Valley. They're asking the New River Valley, and Western Virginia, Central Virginia, and Southwestern Virginia to bear the cost of these projects. So what's in it for the landowners and citizens throughout the NRV to become a host for the pipeline, its associated compressor stations, and living with the risk from them? Absolutely, positively, nothing. And as Elizabeth shared, these are the same resolutions. We respectfully ask that you represent us and consider those in your representation of the county. And we really ask that you take action to protect our land, our water, our habitat, our wildlife, and our citizens. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you for listening. Ma'am, may I answer some questions?
A couple of questions. There's an existing gas transmission pipeline that runs under the New River, goes right near the 114 bridge, goes through Walton, and then I think comes right by, I guess, where Wal-Mart is, goes all the way through that. What size pipeline is that?
Most of the interstate pipelines are 24 to 36 inches. I don't know specifically about that one. But most of them have been up until the recent fracking, which they've decided to go with 42, because it provides much more volume. And since there's a limited life of a fracked well, 15 or 20 years, they want to get as much of the volume out and down to the transmission pipeline on Transco as soon as possible. 15 years, that pipe is dead. It'll still be under the ground, but it will be dead.
And it's not just the size. The other issue is the fracked gas is much more highly pressurized going through the pipes than traditional gas.
Okay. And I'm just trying to get a better understanding, because my parents have owned that land for 50 years that had a gas line running through it. We've ridden horses, we've had four-wheelers on it, we've never had to ask permission. They've actually, I think, paid us to plant some crops on there periodically so they wouldn't have to bush-horn it, or spray it, or clear it. And so I'm trying to get a better understanding why this line that you're talking about, you would have to get permission to be able to do those things.
What we've gotten from Williams Pipeline Company here out in Tulsa, Oklahoma, they're the ones that own Transco. From their information, they haven't gotten back to us about number eight, although we've tried to get them, their information, the landowner says, for a pipe this size, you can't run anything along the pipeline. You may go across the pipeline, but wherever you want to cross it, with a tractor, a bulldozer, heavy trucks, you've got to tell them ahead of time so they can build up that piece of it for you. But it's not as if you can just go anywhere across it. If you plant corn or something else, if you do deep plowing, you can't go down more than 16 inches across that. You can plant wheat and other things, you break down those on.
But the corn crop that's in the, right there at the 114 bridge is where, and you can see the pumping station that they recently upgraded where it goes underneath the New -- they plant corn there. Are they just not going as deep? Or is it just, is it a different line? I'm just trying to get a better idea so I can understand. We've got that transmission line. Why is that one so much, this one's so much different?
All I can say is, I don't plant corn, I don't want to, so I don't.
Okay. All right. And I was just, because you had so much information and--
And our understanding is the pressurization of the gas with this type of pipeline, which is different from the fracked gas.
And what happened in the two places you mentioned?
Appomattox and out in California.
That was because of corrosion of the pipeline. That was because of corrosion of the pipeline. And pipelines get older, and they corrode, and where they have a weak spot. They fly over to find the weak spots, and also look for that thing coming up, which will kill things on the surface, and they go and try to.
And periodically, they drive a truck over that looks like it's got a bunch of sensors on it.
We've also been told, not correctly, because we've not invited anybody on our property, but we've been told that they can come on your property along that right-of-way, twenty-four seven, to check if they can fly over it. I don't know how far off the ground they deep line, but I don't particularly want helicopters or planes or people. We have dogs. We live on our property. I don't particularly want people I don't know, traipse across. And you fence your property, like most people have cattle fenced in you, you can put a fence, but it can't go any less than a thirty-degree angle. It's got to go across like a ninety-degree angle so the pipes can be set, the posts for the fence won't go down and hit the pipeline. But going longer has more potential of hitting the pipe, and they won't let you have a fence across the property. That's going to be the real problem, if you raise counts or anything. Other questions you have? We're very passionate about this. We've got to let it sink down, come across our land, but we don't like that very much.
Any further questions from our board?
Yeah, what? Where's your land now?
We live on Spalding Road.
On what?
Spalding Road.
Spalding Road?
Berderville Mountains, between here and Radford. You drive toward Radford on the right-hand side. We live on the north side of it. Mike Hayne has the property on the south side, and we live on the north side.
Good luck. Okay, our next order of business is public hearings. The following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the New River Valley section of the Runoff Times from September 5th and September 12th, 2014. That is, AFD Number 14, Fisher's View Renewer, District 14, Fisher's View, is generally located in the southern, southeastern portion of Montgomery County, and in its facility of Allegheny Springs.
Ms. Hopkins is going to handle that for us tonight. Bree?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, as you stated, we have an agricultural-forested district that's scheduled to be renewed this year. We only have one, Number 14, Fisher's View. It's located in the vicinity of Allegheny Spring and Fisher's View Road. Currently have two property owners at about 482 acres. We did have one of those property owners propose an addition this year to add about 50 acres. So the total that's being requested for renewal is 531.85 acres. This is the map of your property. This is Allegheny Spring Road. You can see the line with Floyd County here. And this is Fisher's View Road. The parcels in green are the parcels that are existing currently, and then the three parcels that are proposed to be added are shown in yellow. The AFD Committee and the Planning Commission did meet and discuss the requested renewal. The AFD also conducted a site visit. Both recommended approval of the renewal and additions for a period of eight years, with a total acreage of 531.85 acres, involving thirteen parcels. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Yeah, let me, I have a constituent back here that asked a question, and wants me to make sure I get the correct answer from the last viewer.
Okay.
What is the difference between an AFD and a forestry designation?
I'm assuming they're talking about forestry land use designation. With land use, you basically agree to receive a tax reduction on your property. You have to submit a forestry plan to the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and you receive that tax reduction. If you sell that property for it to be developed, you have to pay five years' back taxes on that reduced price. With the agricultural and forested district, it's very different. You basically agree to tie up your property for that eight-year period, but you do not receive a tax incentive at this time. What it basically does is it encourages us in planning and you, as the Board of Supervisors, to look at new developments, how they may impact AFD districts. We've had several come through where we've had people put an additional buffer on property to protect that AFD district. We've also used it, I believe, when the Smart Road came through, it was used to try to help mitigate some of the impacts of that because it did cut through the AFD district. And the recent AEP transmission line was actually relocated because it was going to cut through the middle of an AFD district. So we recommended they scoot it closer to the railroad so it would not have as much of an impact, and it did. So it does have some level of protection, but it's not a guaranteed protection. We, I have tended to see the owners that do it, they do it just because they want to be good stewards of their land and they want to protect it properly. They do not receive much benefit.
I'll answer your question. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. We will open it up to public comment. Seen, nope.
For the public hearing.
This is public, for the public hearing we're having, not our public address. Seeing no one coming. Okay.
The response to the difference between the forested district and the land use forestry. The forested district has the option to become part of land use and get, and receive the discount. So this, this, it's not like, it's not receiving a benefit, benefits there, if they want, if they choose to take it. Thank you.
They want to take it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close that public hearing. The second public hearing is ordinance, established application deadline for appeals, Board of Equalization. Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll see a couple of comments. What's before you is an ordinance. Under state law, 58.13378 gives the board the authority to go ahead and set deadlines for the, for the whole Board of Equalization process. And the first deadline you're going to be setting is when applications have to be submitted. And what this ordinance is proposing is that January 15th be that deadline, meaning that's when they have to send those in to the, to the BOE in order to be considered. And then the second deadline that this ordinance is proposing, and what state law gives you the authority to do, is, is set the time when the BOE will be done with all of their appeals. And what this says is that the, the BOE will finish, or finally dispose all of their appeals by March 4th, 2015. And that timeframe is consistent with what previous boards have done during, when, when they were setting the similar deadlines in previous reassessments. So this is very consistent with what other, with, this board has done previously, four years ago.
Okay.
I think there's a question.
Any question? Okay.
Yeah, just, just a clarification. It seems to say this in the, the ordinance, but I just want to make that, this public, is that the January 15th deadline is the, is the application date by which they need to receive the application.
Correct, yeah. And then the hearings would happen after that.
Okay, but it's not postmarked by January 15th. It's received by?
Yes, it's, it's received applications.
Okay.
We'll open it up to public comment. If it's, anyone would like to comment on this public hearing, please do so at this Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. Our next item is public addresses. We, okay, I wonder why I couldn't see him. We have a couple of people signed up to speak, but after those people speak, if it's anyone else who would like to come forward and speak, that who have not signed up can do so after they have completed their addresses. You come to the podium, state your name and address, direct all comments to the board, and you have five minutes. The first one is Tom Hoffman.
Yeah, hi. My name is Tom Hoffman. I live in Giles County on the outskirts of Perrisburg. And I belong to the New River Valley branch of the Sierra Club. I was a transportation chair for a while, and I belong to the concerned citizens of Giles County, that we work on issues out there. And one thing that a lot of people don't realize is that when these gas companies send out a letter, they have to send you a certified letter before they have the right to come on your property. If they just send a letter, well, that's not certified, then you can, you don't have to allow them on there. But I think the most important thing here is we need to know where this pipeline's going to go. I mean, so far, we've just been playing detective and trying to connect the dots. I got one here, Spruce Run Road, somebody got one, Spalding Road, the gentleman who just spoke, and somebody else got one on Radford Road over by Route 11. So I guess if you triangulate those, you can get an idea where it's going. But we really need to know where the pipeline's going before we can make, make a decision on it. And I just, I don't know, it seems like, it seems like the company's been all secretive about it. They haven't, you know, come forward with, and they may even be sending people letters that are not even on the route, you know, just to pull them off or get stuff. So I think that's the most important thing. We have to be, we need to know where it's going to go. That's all.
Thank you. The next speaker we have signed up is Phyllis Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board, and the commanders. It's fun to be back with you all. And I have to say that when I heard this pipeline might be going through Salem Conservancy, y'all may have read the email I sent you, I was really shocked. Have y'all been there? Have you ever been over to Salem? It's amazing. Just take a little trip. I didn't even know it was in Montgomery County until this whole pipeline's out. I figured it was part of Radford University and in Radford. But it is one of the most beautiful, restful, wonderful places for a retreat, or just a personal getaway. Our churches have retreats there, and I've been there for other means as well. And I'm really shocked that any company would do that, through such a place. But then today, I read, this is cool. The heirs of oil baron John D. Rockefeller are dumping fossil fuel investments, including natural gas, from their investment portfolios. The guy that started the, his heirs are now going to take their money out of this natural gas and other fuel investments, naturally, that have been hurting the environment for so long. I mean, it just blew my mind. Stephen Rockefeller, one of the fund's trustees, told the Times, "We see this as having both a moral and economic dimension." And for me, this is truly a justice issue. It's a moral issue, doing what it could and has done in the past to our farm people. My grandmother and grandfather were farmers in Pennsylvania. And friends of mine have been fighting this whole thing up there, and I never dreamed we'd be having it here. But yes, outside workers do come to work on the land. The little hotel, I've been going to this lake near my hometown of Binghamton, New York. It was founded in 1869, this little hotel on the lake, Little Lake. And for two summers, and throughout the year, the workers on the pipeline out there were renting their cottages. It doesn't give local people jobs. I mean, it's, you can tell, it's, it's very painful to me. For the sake of Mother Earth, our Mother Earth created by God, to last hopefully forever, I ask you to truly consider not accepting this through our precious period. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board in our public address session?
Hello again. My name's Mara Robbins, and I'm here from Floyd County, Virginia. And I mainly want to urge you to pay attention, not only to your citizens, but to the fact that there is a huge societal shift happening right now. They are estimating that over 400,000 people showed up in New York City yesterday for the People's Climate March. This is a climate change issue. This is a sustainable energy issue. Montgomery County is home to several higher universities, some of which are currently doing incredible research on energy production. And I strongly encourage you to not only pass the resolutions that have been requested, but to also pursue those alternative energy solutions, because they're there. It's a matter of profit over value. And we need to start looking much more closely at what we value, rather than short-term profit. So I thank you very much for your time and for your attention to these matters. And I want to congratulate your citizens on some excellent presentations. Those were really outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm David Berry. I live at 1371 Breckinridge Drive in Blacksburg, which is the Preston Forest area. I have a degree in chemistry. I know a little bit about fluids, but I'm not an engineer. But I wanted to comment from there on karst and fluids. So with chemistry, fluids are gases and fluids, water, liquids, gases and liquids. And I've been involved in this knowledge-gaining process here about the gas pipelines for a couple of months now. This part of the nation is unique in having karst soil, which most of us call it dirt, but it's actually a kind of limestone. And that limestone in the, in the Appalachians holds lots and lots of water. This is one of our most valuable resources. It's stored there. It comes there with rains, you know, we see it in the rivers and everything, but it goes back now. We all see springs in our properties. We all see sinkholes in our properties. My yard's really a sinkhole. One's almost as big as a car now. So, you know, to say it's Swiss cheese is maybe a little forgiving because it's not that bouncy. It's brittle stock. It breaks. There's been research done in karst to see how fluids move through karst. And fluids can move through karst at up the rate of a walking speed. So not only do we have to worry about gases that go up into the air and hit a spark, for example, there can be subterranean gases that we don't even know about. And they can migrate to this karst soil, include everybody's water. So we can lose lots of wells. My neighborhood's notorious for losing wells. Somebody puts in a new well, and ours goes dry. Everybody's got those stories. Our water's soft, and people say, "I can't predict your water anymore. It changes all the time." So I stop calling. But you can't ignore this huge resource that we have throughout. It reaches from, you know, the Northern Virginia all the way down through Kentucky and Tennessee. The state of Virginia has, has published a policy through the Bureau of Mines, Minerals, and Energy, I think it is, saying that pipelines across karst are not recommended. And in the Augusta-Nelson area, their emergency preparedness plan, repaired some eight years ago, also said specifically, that pipelines that carry natural fuels such as gas and oil should not be built on karst soils because they're too unstable. So I'd ask you two to probably review your own emergency preparedness plan and see how, how you've taken that stand in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I live at 1025 Madison Road. This is my copy of my letter. And I live in Preston Forest. Don't you, plenty, we're just talking about planning that you grow corn. There are neighborhoods over on Russian Mountain that are probably high, one of the highest tax-baited properties in the county. What's this going to do to your tax base when they come through and wreck the value of our property? our property? Just want you to think about that, because there is a lot of tax in collective net area.
Thank you, sir. Is it anyone else?
My name is Laura Berry, and I live at 1371 Breckenridge Drive in Preston Forest. As my husband is talking about it, we happen to be involved in the Augusta County Alliance, which is fighting the pipeline from, it's originally called the Southeast Sustainability Project. It's now been renamed to be the East Coast Pipeline. And so we've learned a whole lot, because our farm up there happens to be also impacted by this. So we're getting a double whammy. But one of the things that I am noticing that makes me very unhappy is that they seem to be attempting to deceive people about this pipeline. They're sending out these letters, and they want us to agree with the letter, it's not a certified letter, to allow them to come on our land. Well, the requirement, and I know this just from my activism with the Sutter Pipeline, is that they send you a certified letter 15 days in advance. And you are allowed to decline that. They have the right to continue to come on to your property. However, if you have notified them in writing that you declined, they are not allowed by regulation to bring motorized vehicles, chainsaws, or any motorized equipment on to your land. And I think the people who are being impacted by this need to know, because they pulled a little trick on some people employed by showing up on their driveways and saying, "Oh, we just happened to be in a neighborhood, do you mind if we surveyed your land?" And the people were afraid to say no, because they were afraid that they might end up in court. Well, I think we need to demand a much more straightforward, honest approach out of EQT for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, anyone else who would like to speak during our public addresses? Send anyone else coming forward, we'll close our public address session. The next item is into work session. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following. One, reassessment. Two, legislative priorities for 2015. Three, FY14 carryover, carryforward requests. Four, revenue sharing projects for FY2016. Five, Charlottesville middle school property agreement. Do have a motion, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into work session with the clerk. Please call the Board.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Todd.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Mr. Pooty.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Right.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Ryan.
Aye.
So the House.
Right now in work session. Mr. Chair, first item this evening is a presentation on reassessment. And we'll recognize Tom Bland, our assessor, and Carol's handing out a copy of the presentation.
Thank you.
Gary Eames is here this evening also. Very glad to see you.
Good evening, folks. For the benefit of those who've been through this before, you're familiar with parts of this presentation. For those who are new, who wanted, I'm gonna take you through a little bit of the process of how and why we have to do this. And we'll transition flow into the actual state of where we are with the reassessment at this point in time. This is, of course, to address the reassessment, the ongoing reassessment for the, that goes into effect in January for 2015. Our legal requirement, or the state law requires counties to have a general reassessment every four years unless the population is less than 50,000. While every four years required, reassessment annually or biannually is also allowed. If the state tax department sales ratio study for any county or city shows the sales assessment ratio is lower than 70% in the year of general reassessment, this proves that the locality had failed to assess at 100% of market value. The goal of the mass appraisal is to produce accurate appraisals and equitable assessments. The primary tool, major of the outcome of the mass appraisal is the sales ratio study. A sales ratio study compares assessed values to market values as represented by open market sales. The product is the sales ratio of assessed values and sales price. Let's see, we have assessed values over sales price. In this case, zip will show the 80%.
I'll turn. Gary.
Good afternoon, Board. One thing we do when we start reassessment is actually divide the county up into smaller areas called neighborhoods for the purpose of market comparisons. So these would be actual named neighborhoods to start with, Belmont Farms and so on. And then we spread out from those neighborhoods if we have to, to find the comparable sales. Each property is visited by a field inspector who verifies the data that's collected, and he collects any additional data that they would find while they're going around the property. Also, a second review is done by myself or one of the other supervising appraisers. So sometimes you may see me driving down the street, and you wonder why I didn't stop. Well, I'm a second review, basically, just going behind our appraisers, looking at, at the homes again. Throughout this process, we also, we compare the neighborhood sales within these market areas, looking at what your neighbors' homes have sold for to use as a comparable to appraise your home. And yearly appreciation trends and other data is analyzed at that point. During the last reassessment, for those of you that were on the Board at that time, remember, we noticed that larger tracts, well, medium-sized tracts, I guess, you would say, the 25 to 50 acre tracts were selling at a larger rate per acre, and that's where we had the, most of the increase last time. Land seems to be stabilized in those size tracts now. You still have some out there, there's always the ones that sell for a lot higher than the assessment, or some that'll sell lower, and then we'll use those again to, as comparables for the properties that we're appraising. This time, we noticed the largest increase was in the rental market, the multifamily Exactly. And, and the commercial markets also showing some strengthening. To date, the reviews are still not fine. We're still, at this point, analyzing sales. Field work is completed, has been completed, and right now, we're still running these ratios that the state will. We do preliminary ones right now before we send the notices out. We're on schedule to send the, the notices out by October the 10th. That'll give us time to, at that time, our state interest Board will be taking appointments and actually start the hearings October the 28th. And to date, residential values are the, are still stable at this point. We didn't see a tremendous, any large areas of decrease or areas of increase. But again, keep in mind, you still have those outliers that, that could show more than percentages that we'll show you on the next slide. Commercial properties appear to be in the range of 5% to 9% increase. And again, this is an average. Some properties may have been stable, some may have gone up higher than that, some may have actually decreased. So those are your averages.
Gary, can you mention quickly the difference between these hearings and the BOE hearings?
Yeah, our hearings are always referred to as the informal hearings. That's where the property owner has a right to come down, come in, sit down with the appraiser, who actually worked their properties. And we'll go over the sales that we had for their neighborhoods at that time. Again, we'll check the information on their property. We'll go over number of bathrooms, finished basement, the year of build, just to double check, to make sure that their information is correct again. So after we finish with, with all of our hearings, we'll send out a second notice. And that's when they would have an opportunity to come back and make another appointment with the Board of Equalization.
But Gary, it's true that you, at your hearing, sometimes you'll solve their issues and...
That's true. That's true. Some, like, most of the time, they'll be satisfied when they leave with an answer, or they'll, you know, a decrease in, in value, or whatever, to, to make sure the property's correctly appraised. And again, the values may be changed during these appeals. They could go up, they could stay the same, or they could be lowered. So it just depends on the information that they bring forth to us.
What's remarkable is not, we not only get people coming in saying, "My value's too high," but we also have people coming in saying, "My value's too low." So that, that, that makes it interesting and appetizing, too. So I'm thinking there's something these folks want to sell their homes sometime.
Here are the proposed changes right now, and again, remember, these are still under review. The average in Blacksburg is a 0% to 1% increase. Christiansburg's the same, 0% to 1% increase. In the county, the average is from 0% to 1%. Again, these are averages. We call them outliers. We may have found information on a property that we didn't know about, a house that was remodeled, addition that was, was missed, or an addition that was, that was constructed without a permit, farm buildings. So anything could be classified as an outlier. But as it stands right now, these are your percentages.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, is that although the growth, the, the value's increasing very slightly, it is a positive movement?
It is a positive.
Okay.
And these percentages do not include commercial or multifamily?
This is just residential. This is, and again, residential is, I think we figured out 85% of the property values here in the county are, are residential.
Oh, I missed one.
Oh, I skipped one. Again, the strongest market that we've seen right now are the multifamily housing units, apartment complexes. All you have to do is ride through Blacksburg and look at the construction on apartments. There's a, there's a shortage. There, when we, we had moved one of our appraisers here, and thank goodness, we only had to find one house. They were hard to find. And because of the supply and demand there, they didn't really want to, you know, work with us. They would give us a 12-month lease. So there is a high demand for rental properties, especially in the Blacksburg area. We've had a few strong sales in Christiansburg, uh, apartment complexes. So those will be the ones that will see the most increase.
I'm gonna take over here and discuss our, some of the legislative changes that occurred this year that are impacting our, our notice that is going to be sent to the taxpayers. Carol's gonna give you an example of this, and this is something that we just hold, we hold our breath and hope that the people can understand this. Within the past few years, the General Assembly has enacted changes in the state law that affects these notices and provides the landowners, and the Board of Equalization's process has also been affected during the hearing of their appeal. To comply with the required changes, makes the notices, these notices sent to the home are very confusing. There, I'm gonna dive, for just a little bit, the front of it has, we have to show the two previous assessments, along with the assessment of the reass, for the reassessment. And the interpretation, we have two previous assessments, go back to 2010, 2006, or 2007, 2011 reassessments. We think that there's a move to resolve that, that was supposed to be the two previous, two-year assessments, the word turkey is literally for going back that far, which may create confusion amongst the taxpayer.
But the cha, and if I can just interrupt, the challenge is, the law that was adopted by the General Assembly is confusing.
Absolutely.
And one of the things we're gonna talk about in a few minutes on legislative priorities is, we need some help. I mean, supposedly, those laws were enacted to provide more information, which they're providing information, all right, but, but, you know, we're gonna, you guys are gonna get calls...
Oh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a nightmare, I'm afraid. We have, there has been, I'm not sure, I'm, I'll tell you what those proposed changes there are, because this is just in the, the front end of the, of the, of the noticing process. The law also states you have to, for, I guess this is to clarify to people what their last, the previous levies were. The backside of the page shows what the levies have been for the previous two years, which have no correlation with the front of the page. So we are wanting to see confusion, I'm afraid. And this is all a result of the law that was enacted.
And Tom, if I could, the reason there's confusion is that we think the statute was written in such a way to really accommodate those counties and cities that annually assess.
Yep.
Because that makes sense. But what about us, or the other counties that do it every four years, or those who do it every six years? All of a sudden, these notice requirements make no sense, because they're, remember, we only assess or reassess every four years.
Right.
The, the only other time you do an assessment is when there's a change, meaning if you put a deck on your house, or added a, something to your house. But if you don't do anything like that, your, your assessment does not change for four years. And so that's why, that's the only way we could read that statute to say, the last two assessments, well, that's, that's four years ago, and then another four years ago.
Eight years ago.
Yeah. And so that's the only way you can read that. And so we think when that statute was written, someone complained, and I think it was up north somewhere, and I guess we assumed they wanted more, didn't get enough information, but it was written to accommodate the large localities that assess once a year.
I think, I think their, their objective is for full disclosure and for the taxpayers to get as much information as they can. And we pride ourselves here in Montgomery County of being open door, of having people be able to come to us, get as much information as they need to determine whether or not they, whether they've been assessed fairly or not. And so, and we are more than, more than willing to listen to whatever their concerns are. This also evolved, this, this change was occurred in, for the effective year of January, actually, July 1 of this year. In July, in January 1 of 2012, this, this was the law that was enacted, that affects the BOE, and it institutes a 45-day waiting period between the scheduling of BOE hearings and actual hearing, or between the time you schedule it, it's 45 days. Now, that has been broken down, what they essentially did was they divided it into two, two classes of taxpayers, because it's, the law says anybody who has four houses or less must wait 45 days. Everybody else can come in, make an appeal, and, and be heard, as soon, as soon as they get all the information they need, that, that appeal can be, that hearing can be set. But those with four houses or less must wait 45 days.
Well, Tom, they don't have to wait 45 days. What it says is, we have to give them 45 days.
We give them 45 days.
And so you, in that notice, that's to also say you have the right to look at certain information that we've already put in our notice, that they have a right to anyway. But we, we're required to give them, once they, so if property owner X says, "I want to appeal my assessment," and they're a residential owner with four or less units, we can't schedule their hearing until 45 days after we send them out the notice.
Right.
Whether they want 45 days or not.
Whether they want 45 days or not. And our, well, we immediately have to respond by sending them, as soon as we get the request for, for a hearing. them, as soon as we get the request for a hearing, we will send them a notice of, to comply with that, to get the 45-day ticket at that point in time, and send them any information that we have available for them to be able to make an educated appeal on what we've proposed. Now, to resolve some of these issues, this is part of the legislative package that is going to happen, that I guess we're asking for your support. There are a lot of the associations this year, the whole state has been affected by this issue. And there are some proposed change to address the issues related to these notices that have been drafted. We have someone come in General Assembly, delegate leaders, will be introducing proposed changes. They are drafted, they are in place, and then we'll be carrying the General Assembly. I've been told by, I guess he's a consultant to the Commissioner of Revenues, that there is, is going to be carried on the eastern side by a senator from the eastern side, I'm not sure of the senator's name, but it's going to be, rather than asking Senator Edwards to do it, they've gone to the east side to show that it's just not southwest Virginia that's being affected by this proposed law. So we think, with hope and a grain of hope, that by next year, which doesn't affect this year, but by next year, they'll be back to two previous years' assessments on that front end of the, of the notices for the hearings. Language to address the problems created by the 45-day rule, waiting period, is also being drafted, has not gotten to that point to propose it to the, to someone to carry it back to the legislature. We're working very hard to try to get that language in place, so we can do that, and have to trace the legislative changes. Any questions?
Well, my question is, like, when all this was going on, were we ever contacted by our General Assembly representatives and asked how this was going to impact our locality? Or is this a cleanup job after the fact?
It's more of a cleanup job after the fact.
This was passed without question, so no one was ever.
And there's plenty of associations they could have consulted.
Yeah, I'm just not getting why you would create such a big mess for people.
Well, I.
Not you, but the General Assembly.
Actually, a questionnaire came out from the Department of Taxation.
Yes.
Wanted to know how this was going to affect your locality.
But it was sent after, after it was already trapped, after it was already passed. The gentleman who I spoke with, Charlie Prossen, I believe is his name, he is a retired commissioner, and he is basically a legislative watchman. He is a consultant of most of these committees, and he was in the hospital when all this came down, so there was no one really watching. The fox was in the hen house already, so there was no one watching what was going on. And we've talked to Senator, Delegate Habib, we've talked to Nick Rush, we've talked to Delegate Gibbs, and Mr. Habib said that it was passed, he couldn't understand why it was passed without question. And that was a good question we had, why was it passed without question? I don't think anybody basically saw what the impact would be. The law that has been rewritten, has been rewritten by the legislative attorneys who drafted the original law, so he is the one that has sent this back to us, and he brought Delegate Gibbs to him to carry that, but it would be just like.
Yeah, I guess my point is that we always hear from them when we have our little fall meeting, that anything that's going to impact us, they're going to call on the phone and contact Craig, or they're going to contact us. And it seems to me, this has such a big impact, that that's why I'm asking, was this done or not? Because that's what we're always pledged.
I don't believe, I don't know.
Candidly, I don't know that they realized that was the impact until after the fact.
And the 45-day rule, I know they don't understand the impact of that, because when I talked to Mr. Prossen, he says, "You're the first jurisdiction that's contacted this law to tell us that there's a problem." And I said, "Well, we've got a problem." And it really affects, the main problem is the budgetary process.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we don't have that, if we don't have that date cut off, if we don't have the land book in place.
Exactly.
Then you can't set the tax rate, or you can, but it's a nightmare after.
Yeah, you're just.
Well, thank you guys for getting right on it and trying to help to educate us, and wow.
I suspect we won't be the only ones receiving phone calls. So we'd be glad to try to feel any questions we can to any citizens and citizens. It's going, in fact, we'll probably have a pretty down pat answer by the time we're all through, so.
That's good, we know who to refer them to.
That's exactly right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, guys. Number two, legislative priorities. Mr. Chair, under tab C, in your agenda this evening, you have the legislative priorities that were adopted by this board last year in October to be carried into the, carried to the legislators for the 2014 General Assembly session. I'll just briefly hit the bullet points of those, ending unfunded mandates on local government, ending future state funding reductions, strengthening the diversity of local revenues by sharing income taxes or other revenue sources, strengthening the county's revenue base by enacting equal taxing authority, recognizing the state's role in funding quality education, ensuring 100% of administrative funds for the Comprehensive Services Act, providing state-funded for 100% of the cost of optical scan voting machines, electronic poll books, and operating costs for the Electoral Board and Registrar, increasing state aid to the library system, processing and marketing of industrial hemp, mandatory water and sewer connections, and eliminating the split voting precincts in Montgomery County. We can start with those and see if there are any that you would like to eliminate or reword. Also, as you've just heard from the last presentation, we would like to include language as a legislative priority to help us have our legislators address the situation they've created with these.
That's right.
Timing and tax notice informations.
The 45-day business.
Was there any update to the split voting precincts? I know for two years, they said they were going to do something. I know in the first year, it got held up by that whole nonsense about the redistricting.
Yeah, and once again, it just got, it just got defeated in the committee.
Never made it through. Never got out of committee, did it?
No, I don't think it ever got out of committee.
Well.
In that split district, there's something fundamentally wrong. Your ballot's supposed to be secret, but when you've got such a small district, when you've got three people in there, and only one of those three votes, pretty much everybody knows exactly how that person gets their vote. It's a violation in my mind of that sacred, you know, the secrecy of the ballot, and I really wish they would change that, it just seems fundamentally unfair, and everybody knows how, exactly how that person votes.
Could it be challenged in court?
Well, what's so weird about that is that, that area is actually in Radford.
Yeah, it was grandfathered in.
It's crazy. It's in the city of Radford. How is that in Montgomery County?
It's literally in Iowa.
Right, they didn't want to be part of Radford.
They didn't want to be part of the city of Radford.
One thing we can do with split precincts is maybe this time, see if our legislators will just take ours.
Fix that one.
Because what they tried to do again is do them all statewide again, and once again, it got shut down. And so, or no, we don't know the reason.
Just focus on our.
Maybe this time, get our people to just take ours, to say, "Hey, we want to eliminate those splits in our house seats."
Can that be introduced concurrently in the Senate and in the House?
I'm sorry?
Can it be introduced concurrently in the Senate and in the House?
Yes.
So if it gets out of one, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we discussed that after last year. Anything we do, we're going to do concurrently.
Same thing with the, I remember, the same thing with the mandatory water and sewer connections.
Yes, the both sides.
That never made it out of the House, but we didn't try it out of the Senate.
It never got out of committee on the House side.
Yeah, okay. So we would ask Senator Edwards or, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Smith or Chafin, I guess.
Whichever one will run it, yes.
Other questions or comments on the legislative priorities?
These all sound appropriate to me. My only question is, which we should probably discuss, is the hemp one. Since we had a former member who was the big champion of that, I don't really have a problem with it, but I'm not enthusiastically supporting it. If there's something that needs to come out, so we can put something else in, then that would be the one that I would suggest. So I'll put that on the table.
Well, we're planning to discuss these further at a later date, right?
Well, what we wanted to do tonight is, is get some direction, hear any concerns, anything that's not in there, that needs to be in there, anything that's in there that doesn't need to be in there. And then we'll come back with a draft at our next meeting for you to.
How are we doing with the voting machines? Is that something that's still ongoing?
You want to address that from a budgetary standpoint, Carol?
Well, I believe the optical scan machines are what the board funded over a three-year period.
That's correct.
Right.
And we're in the second year now.
But we're funding it, not the state.
So we still want them to, we want to try to get them for.
We would love for them to reimburse us for that.
That's what I wasn't sure about.
Yes, and many other things we'd like for them to reimburse us for.
Well, you know, the sad state of this whole thing is that those things that we ask for year after year, that these real important things about ending unfunded mandates, and funding education, and public safety, and asking for a way to raise revenue, it's so sad that we have been asking for this for decades.
Yeah.
And it gets absolutely nowhere, and I just wish for one time that maybe if we could get, you know, even our, our General Assembly people to, to try to do something. I mean, it's just so frustrating to just ask for the same thing over and over and over and have nothing happen. And I don't know how to make it happen. You know, we vote to have these people represent us, and we tell them what we need, but nothing seems to happen.
Be nice to cross something off, wouldn't it? To actually take it off this list, because they did it.
Be nice.
I know.
Really would. I think for the 17, 18 years I've been on here, we've just about asked for this everything.
Yeah, I mean, it's been going on before I ever got on the board.
Right. And we, we ask for appropriate changes, and the money for funding quality education, it goes nowhere, even when I was on the school board, before I got on this board. It doesn't, yeah, I have one, but I don't know.
Does anyone think that if we narrowed it down to two or three, that it would be more helpful?
No.
No. We've tried that, we do it on the state level with the VACO people.
I didn't know, you said that it was been on there for as long as, I didn't know it was been on there. And I thought, well, maybe if we reduced it to two or three, that perhaps it would have more of an impact, but at the same time.
Well, considering the budget this time, I don't know, you know, asking them to reduce the unfunded mandates, they're not going to do that. I don't, none of this is really going to get very far because of the budget situation, right?
But we still need to ask for these things.
Yeah, I know we do, but we know that it's almost futile to do it, but the thing, particularly the, the whole idea of strengthening the local revenues by sharing income taxes and things like that, those could be done very easily.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, we all see the same thing when we have our legislative meeting, you know, we get that traditional, mm-hmm, lift service and things like this, and seem like once they eat, they're gone, and they sort of, sort of forget about us until the following, to the year coming up.
And we pay for the privileges, right? We pay for the meal.
Yeah.
Well, we also go down there and we lobby them during the General Assembly session. I mean, we've gone down there every year, and every year, you know, whatever's on the hot plate, plus what we've voted on as a board, we restate.
Well, that going down there is just a farce, ain't it? I've never seen them hurry back to make sure they cop somebody that's going down there. They know, was telling them that, you know, they, they go and do their own thing, leave you to.
Doctorate, I guess.
Their aides, and, you know, if you can get anything out of them, so be it, but they're not worried about what they should get, they're going to get what they want.
I think our people always know what's possible in the General Assembly, and so they may say, "Yeah, we know you want it, yes, we like this," but when you come down to the reality of it, there are only one or two people, and it's very difficult. But we, as Matt says, we continue to ask.
It's not just us, it's everyone.
What? It's not just us, no.
Gotcha.
This was just a, just kind of a clarification, or something that was raised by Ms. Biggs' initial point about the optical scan voters, voting machines. There's new requirement for the photo ID, and are we absorbing any costs locally for either the production or distribution of those voter IDs if people come in and request them? Who pays for the ID, the state-issued voter IDs, if somebody doesn't have another form of state ID?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can assure you that the Registrar has been very concerned about how that new requirement is affecting his budget. So I'm assuming the answer is, we're absorbing some of that cost through the funding that we provide to the Registrar.
Could we get maybe clarification on that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because since the state required it, they should be paying for it.
Absolutely.
We didn't require it.
One would think so.
So we might have to put that down on our little list, that's a good one, man.
Yeah, you could put it under the, the voting machines or something like that.
Mm-huh.
We'll find out.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ready to move on to the next item?
So, could I, sorry. I said that was all, it's not all. Just for clarification, said, Craig, you said that staff would bring back a draft, you're looking for direction, would that be a draft for further work session, or a draft for adoption at the subsequent meeting?
What we've done in the past is had a draft for adoption at the next meeting. Now, what we can do is circulate something prior to the meeting, and I don't know if we want to do that, because that would be getting input outside the public.
That's fine. Are we agreed then that we want to add things about assessment to there, maybe something about voter ID, if that is actually costing us something locally? And then, my question is still out there about the hemp.
We know, well, I was looking, last year, we adopted this on the 16th of October. What we normally try to do is have it adopted in advance of the VACO annual meeting in November, so we've got two meetings in October, we could.
So we have time.
Yeah, we could have it as a work session, clear up the draft, and have it on the last session of October. I don't know of any reason we have to have it in any sooner than that.
That's fine, thank you.
I'm not sure why we did it on the 16th of October last year, unless we just had an earlier work session.
Because we were so organized, and because nothing changes, we just go, again.
Change the beggar, make a year on it.
Do we have, do we meet with our legislators sooner or later?
Last year, it was in December, if I remember correctly, and that's, and once this is adopted, once we get our VACO priorities as well, then we try to schedule a time with them.
Well, I was thinking that maybe we ought to schedule the time with them sooner and talk to them about these serious issues. I'm sure they know they're serious issues, but still, if we can schedule meetings with them before December, there is a cutoff date when they turn in their proposals, right? I'm not sure when that is.
Yes, ma'am.
Usually in December. Well, the end of, I thought it was somewhere around the middle to the, of December.
I'm nearly positive it is December, but I don't remember when.
Yeah.
We'll have a draft for the next meeting.
Okay, are we ready to move forward? Okay. FY14 carryforward requests.
Okay, I'm good.
We'll have to get you an aide.
We got Marty sitting there.
I think I am the aide. You are it, huh? Thank you. Okay, this is...
This is also under...
Under tab four.
It is under F fiscal year 14 carry...
Okay. What I thought we would do tonight is sort of revisit the carryforward requests and we have some additional information about some other items and then sort of look at some suggestions about how you may proceed, may want to proceed. I've put the information about the schools' request back up here in case there were any further questions or you wanted to reference it, but I think the superintendent went over all that at the last meeting, so I'm going to skip on over unless you have specific questions and we'll revisit it.
I have a question, and maybe I misheard the superintendent. I didn't download or get this till late, but I thought that the carryover was a total of 1.8 million and then there was additional 575,000.
There is.
Okay. And the way I was looking, grant total of carryforward request on this, I guess I've just made... Am I not reading it right?
No, that's the amount that superintendent's requesting to carry forward from last year's budget. In addition to that, there's an additional 500 to be appropriated.
So I was right?
The 1.8 was left over from their budget. The request for 575 would need to come from other sources.
Sources, okay.
Right.
So anyway, this information's up here about the schools' request, if you want to reference that. Otherwise, I'm not going to go through the whole two slides again. What I wanted to add was to talk about the one-time pay supplement for county employees. As you may recall, we didn't have the resources within the budget in order to be able to give a salary increase for county employees, but had indicated that should there be funds remaining at year-end, that we would look at some type of one-time pay supplement. It would not be reoccurring, but it would occur once this year. And so in order to come up with costs about how much is it going to cost, you have to define out of all the employees, because we have many that are seasonal or only here for short periods or work different hours. How would you define who actually would be a recipient of this? So the employee groups that we included were full-time employees, part-time employees, and grant positions and non-seasonal. And largely what the non-seasonal focuses on is the library, because the library has a number of people who work there a number of hours, but they're not on a part-time classified or full-time plan. And so this would include them so that they would be able to get the benefit of the one-time pay supplement as well as the other county employees.
Can you remind me, please, was this a... This pay supplement, was this a merit increase or was it cost-of-living increase? So would it be across the board, 2% or... I don't remember.
It technically is neither. It does not regrade the pay scale and it has nothing to do with the merit or the evaluation processes, the merit benefit.
Just a one-time supplement.
It would be a one-time only supplement, right.
Everybody gets the same?
Yes.
It would be 2%, yes. The...
If everybody doesn't get the same 2%.
No.
My question is, everybody gets the same?
Everybody does not get the same dollar amount under this proposal, no. The groups that would be excluded are boards and commissions, the county administrator, county attorney, and I put the PSA director in parentheses, as you as a board set their compensation separately from other county employees. And then seasonal positions, and those are like the most obvious one is lifeguards. People who come in, they work a couple weeks, they might work a month, they're here, they're back out. They don't work a consistent period of time. So in order to come up with how do you determine a payroll amount, and this language you can tell was written by the accountants, one-time payment will be equal to 2% of the eligible employee's gross pay received from November the first, 2013, through October the 31st, 2014. And that's a way to frame around the period of time that you would calculate the 2% on for the pay that was received. The cost estimate for that is 337,000. And I will note that the cost does not include the PSA.
Does that include constitutional officers such as the common attorney, the sheriff, and the like?
Yes.
Any employee that's on the counties.
I just wanted to know if... I didn't know if they went into the same as a board or commission classification.
We have them included on the uniform pay plan, and so therefore they would be included in this.
So the five constitutional officers would receive the bonus?
Yes, they would under this proposal. Okay, moving from pay supplement, we also have the fire and rescue commission met last Thursday. They also had funds remaining at year-end. They had... They did not use the total of the fuel contingency. They also had some funds left in what had been provided for some equipment. It didn't cost as much as originally anticipated. So there's approximately 64, a little over $64,000 that's remaining at year-end. The commission has requested that those monies be carried forward into their fire and rescue capital account for use in the future for either vehicle replacements, or I believe there's going to be a need for some communications equipment. So they wanted to just set that aside so it'd be available for what their needs would be in the future. So if we go back and look at the unallocated balance, 3.6 million. The school carryforward request, 1.8. The county pay supplement at 337,000. The fire and rescue capital, total 2.1 million, would leave a balance of 1.5 million.
And so, Carol, just to be clear, is that the only... The one point, the school carryforward and the fire and rescue carryforward, those are already... Those are in the budgets from the previous fiscal year and they're being asked to carry forward, but the...
Yes, that is money that was left over at year-end.
But the county pay supplement, that's the only new?
The only new, right. But it's a good segue into the next slide, which will talk about other uses of year-end dollars. The county departments, we have not asked county departments yet to submit any requests for all or even a portion of the dollars remaining at year-end. Quite honestly, we wanted to see how much the pay supplement, that was a priority, what that would cost, then what funds would be available after that. And so we've not at this point, I think there's some needs out there in county departments that will probably want to consider. I don't think you'll be able to fund all of them, but we probably need to move forward with a request and allow them to let us know what it is they see is important and they need to carry forward. The schools' request is for an additional 575,000 would come from these monies. And revenue sharing for roads, which is another topic that's on the agenda tonight, whether or not you're going to allocate one-time-only monies for that. Now, if you are going to commit to an ongoing allocation for road projects, you need to consider incorporating that in the annual budget rather than just each is a one-time. If you're going to do it every year, you probably should go ahead and incorporate that in the budget and then supplement it with one-time monies if you have more projects in one year than another. So we would make some recommendations for your consideration to go ahead and appropriate funds for the following items now. That would be all or a portion of the schools' carryforward request. I mean, if everyone wants to go ahead with the full amount, that's fine. If you have concerns about certain things, maybe you all want to do a portion. I don't know where or what guidance you'd give us on that, but that's an option. We would like to do the appropriation for the county employees' pay supplement so we can have the monies in place to begin to prepare for doing that. I think November 15th paycheck is what we're looking at for that. And to go ahead and do the fire and rescue carryforward. We'd like to allow county departments to request a portion of their funds. And then at a later date, consider the county departments' carryforward, the schools' request for an additional 575,000, and then whether or not you want to use one-time-only monies for revenue sharing for roads. And that would be our recommendation and...
Can we have like a printout of the carryforward of all the different departments, like how much was left in each budget?
Not there... We haven't done requests yet. You just want to know how much was left over in total. I can get you one, yes.
Thanks.
Now, probably what we'll need to do is show you the ones that then take the pay supplement out of the amount. Or are you just looking at total before the pay supplement?
I think you could have total before the pay supplement and then show the supplement out. I just want to see how much each department had left over from their budget and like, give me a percentage of how much of their total budget was left over.
Okay.
And this excludes like encumbrances, like bills that just simply...
Right, like how much was actually left over.
It also lands down any revenue they didn't make either.
Yeah, yeah. So that will help us understand. Thanks.
Other questions?
Yep.
Matt, do you have something?
Just had one question. On this 2%, has it ever been tried, I mean, equally?
Yeah.
I mean, what I'm getting to, if somebody makes $100,000 and I'm making 20, $100,000 guy still going to get more than me.
Yes.
I have a problem. I have a problem with if we got equal, we need equal without.
I think there's two schools of thought on that, and it's up to the board and how you want to do it. I mean, we have done before...
A couple years ago, we did the 500...
$5 increments, we've done $1,000 increments, we've done percentages, we've done percentage and a half, and it has been done both ways.
And that's just my point. I mean, I like to see everybody get something equal at one time anyway. Of course, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I just had a clarification question. So whatever with these year-end funds, whatever is not allocated just goes into the cash balance?
Builds our fund balance, yes.
Into the fund balance and cash balance. What is the benefit of having a large pool of money in that going into the next year?
Having a large pool of money...
Yeah, so if we did, for example, on slide six, if we allocated everything that was requested, less the... Well, yeah, so we'd have 1.5 million in that fund balance. What's the benefit of keeping that rather than say... Because that's one-time money, correct?
Yes, and if it's not allocated, it does go into the fund... It builds your fund balance, your retained earnings, if you will. It gives you flexibility later on if you need to allocate monies for other capital projects. It also helps, you know, the bond rating agencies are always looking at how much are you retaining at year-end. I mean, if you're spending 100% every year of everything you take in, that's always a concern from the rating agency standpoint.
But I would want people... I don't want anybody to get confused here. We have other reserve funds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, that's not all we've got left. That's a good... Thank you.
I didn't want anybody to think this was all we had.
No, no, no. Good point.
In regards to... I know that the budget crunch is coming and there was, I guess, some discussions I've read in the paper about maybe having to pay back. It was a huge amount of money, but it was like $30 million. When you spread that over all the localities in the states, it doesn't have a huge impact. It's a lot of money, more money than I've ever seen in my life, but as far as when you spread it out in every locality, do we expect that? How is that going to hit us? Is that going to be a couple $100,000 or $100,000?
If they follow the same process they did the last time for the 50 million, we're looking at probably about $180,000, somewhere in there. And if they follow the same process they did the last time, they'll leave it up to the board of supervisors about how to do that. Do you want... You can take it all from one of your departments? You can divide it equally in these departments being primarily the constitutional offices?
Would we be able to use this part of this 1.5 million? If we do what's kind of on the board there for... But would we be able to use those funds just to roll it over and pay that $180,000?
For the board of lux, yes.
$180,000.
For the board of lux to do that, yes.
Yeah, so that would give us some flexibility by having some of that money available.
Yes, and there are some categories. There's about $60,000 that would reduce the state share in the Comprehensive Services Act. Well, we wouldn't shore that back up. We would just wait and see if we needed those funds based on the allocation, and then you would request it later. So at this point, I wouldn't take cash and put behind that until you see whether or not you need it. So it largely is a reduction in the state compensation board funding, primarily the largest amount coming from the sheriff's office.
So if we set...
But it would be up to you as to how to allocate that, even if you wanted to allocate this reductions or if you want to cover it. The choice will be up to you. What the state's going to do is just not give you that much money.
Right, and when you're saying reductions, laying people off potentially, is that what... When you're saying...
Well, I don't know. I mean, it would depend upon how much it... How you wanted to allocate it among the various offices and whether or not those offices had any other funds they needed or could accommodate that reduction. In some of them, such as the smaller offices, absolutely, it would likely end up being a reduction in positions.
Okay, thank you.
If, for instance, we wanted to set aside $1 million for highways, which would give us about $250,000 a piece for the four major... Up here that's got highways, which would translate into a half a million dollars a piece when we get the state max for those, we would have some money for at least the four of the people that I know that's a lot of places up here that need paving. So what would that... How and where would that turn up?
Well, if you look at the balance here of 1.5 million, you take a million dollars off of it, you'll have the half a million dollars left. That's one way. Another way could be is split the difference. You build a half a million dollars in the budget, upcoming budget, and you supplement that with a half a million dollars from your one-time-only funds. Now, you would have to do that every year in order to have a million dollars, but either way, you could come up with a million dollars to do that.
We could start somewhere. That, you know, there may be more up here that could want to just pay that too. I don't...
We have some contingency funds. Perkins is pretty good check over there in the out there. Highway.
So then head into the...
Go order it?
Oh, I got the guard rail, but that didn't come out of the same fund. That came out of the maintenance fund.
Okay.
[laughing]
Further questions or comments?
Yeah, I got one question. How many total employees are we thinking about for the 2%? Like if you added all the part-time and the full-time up? Do we know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, so I'll have to find out.
Let's do what you guys were thinking.
Do you think we could get, I mean, kind of building off something that Todd said, I mean, I would go a step further instead of saying everybody gets the same, is that, I mean, could we do kind of a progressive bonus so that the people who are paid the less get the highest percentage bonus and then it decreases over certain caps? Like somebody under $50,000 gets 2%. Somebody above that, like up to $100,000 gets 1.5% and then 1%, something like that? And then keep it around the same amount if possible? But, I mean, it would probably actually reduce the amount because you're... Although you're giving a higher percentage to people making less, it's a less... It's a smaller amount of money, but it would mean more to them.
It costs the same thing to feed their babies as it does to make money.
Can we see some information on that perhaps? About the cost of that or some-
First thing I think we need to do is identify, because she's asking, Ms. Biggs is asking for employees. And I know that we've got a lot of part-time and got several categories that are lumped in there, so it's not just an easy-
Well, yeah, when you draw, and here's the difference, and I don't know what the numbers will be. We'll just have to run them and see. But when you draw a percentage off number of hours and you don't have people working that many hours, it's not so much what their salary is, it's how many hours they've worked in when you're doing part-time. And so then you start changing that percentage. I, I don't know what the number will be. It could very well be pretty much the same amount. I just want to be clear on what you want to see from us. I've got how many employees would get a bonus. And we can do that on the basis of what we've calculated now, how many would that involve. Then I've heard everybody gets equal. Is that one option we're trying to do, or?
Well, it'd be easy to figure that out if you knew how many employees you divided into the amount of money.
Right.
If everyone's getting equal.
Here's your problem.
Well-
You'd be giving the same amount to somebody that may only work 10 hours a week versus somebody who may be working-
Well, I know that. I'm just saying that's an easy way to figure it out.
He wants to work less than their normal hours, whatever they may be, 40, 35, 40, whatever they're working.
Separate categories.
Can you give them all the same and then figure your part-time as being all the same?
I believe what we did a couple of years ago is we gave all full-time employees 500 and all part-time employees 250, I think is what we did.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I remember something like that.
We can do any of that. We just need to figure out what it is we're, we're doing here.
And then what I heard Supervisor Gabriel suggest is, I guess, banding, if you will.
And it could be even where you have people who are making 25,000 or less at three and then 25 to third, uh, 25 to 52. And then, but that, the more, also, you know, you could, you break it down where-
You could slice that cheese any way you want to. Yes, sir.
But I'm wondering also how much staff time we're putting on them.
I don't know how much of this we can just crank off our payroll versus-
I don't know, since I don't personally run the numbers. You know, if it gets to be where it's taking huge amount of staff hours, we'll stop and bring you what we've got first and see where you are with that. But what I've heard is to do two parts, part-time, full-time, dividing equal amounts among those. And then I've heard a graduated system, somewhere between 3% and 1% with various benchmarks throughout. Is that where we are?
I just want to be sure.
1% being the highest.
Yeah.
I'd go for that too. I'm just trying to get these folks that don't have any cotton picking money. And I see it every day. When their kids get to school, how they get them something to eat and try to make sure that they get them enough lunch then to carry them through till the next morning. I mean, that's just not right. And if we got a chance to change that in any minute possibility, we need to do it.
And Matt, do you have a question?
Yes. I just want to double check for myself that you've got down here to consider, consider those three things at a later date. The, the schools' request for 575, the departments' carry forward, and the one-time funds for revenue sharing. All that come, would have to come from the 1.5 million. Is that correct? That's left over?
That's correct. The unknown piece that you don't know it, that we don't know at this point is what departments would request for carry forward.
Right.
Well, I think that we would have to decide whether all three of them get parts of it, or we fund one, or we've won two. We have to get some priority in those three things, right?
Are you speaking of the three items you just mentioned, the 575?
Yes, yes.
Yes. It's solely up to you as to how you would go about it. But you have one big piece of missing information at this point.
Right.
Because we don't have what the request would be for county departments.
Well, there's something we need to do before that, which is allocate, decide how much we're actually going to allocate of these three things and under number one right there.
Right.
And that'll let us know how much money we actually have left to deal with these other things.
Well, I think she, those three that are up there is 2 point, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, 2.1.
2.1 million.
Right. And it's the pay supplement, the fire and rescue amounts they had left over that they'll be placing in capital to offset their future costs for vehicles or equipment. And then the schools' request for carry forward. If you are comfortable and want to fund the entire 1.8 million, or a portion of it, or how you would want to proceed is up to you all.
Right. I was just looking at it in terms of, suppose we took your recommendation for all that, then that's where we, well, with 1.5.
That's right.
And as Matt says, if we decide that somehow or other we don't want to do fire and rescue, or the carry forward amount of the schools, whatever it is, or the county pay supplement. Because you, you said you added in the 337,000. That's new money. What we've been asked for before that is the, the schools-
Right.
And the fire and rescue.
Yes, ma'am. And the one-time pay supplement was discussed at budget time pending having funds left over at the early end.
Right.
And so we're just revisiting that from the budget process, considering there was nothing included in the budget for it.
Well, I really would like to know what the departments are carrying forward, or would like to carry forward as far as county side too.
At this point, it will, we have to give some time. We'll have to issue the instructions out to them, let them make the request, and then have those come back in. So it, it will be some time before we get to that point. And I guess we were asking you whether or not you would be comfortable with doing at least the three at the top so we could move forward. I'm sure there's some things that the school is waiting, the schools are waiting on.
That's what I'm asking.
To know whether or not they're going to get a portion or all of those funds.
Right.
The same with the pay supplement, you know, when we get prepared with what the Board's comfortable with, we'd like to proceed with that, so.
We could add, depending on what we do, we can either say the, the total amount of the pay supplement's going to be 337, or we can add more to that. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Yes, ma'am. You sure can.
So if, if they needed a pace, I guess I'm concerned about the amount of money, for instance, it's going to come out of the sheriff's department when we have to pay the state back. Because you said, you know, it's all, most of it's going to come out of there.
The majority of the revenue that comes from the state for constitutional offices comes to the sheriff's office because it's the largest one of all of them. And in the commissioner and the treasurer, the state has got to where they hardly reimburse that much.
Nine percent or so.
A little bit. So there's not that much in revenue to work with. So if you were to tell departments they needed to take reductions, then the largest one would be a reduction in revenue to the sheriff's office.
Sheriff's deputies and sheriff's department are on our pay scale.
Yes, ma'am.
So they would get a bonus.
Yes, ma'am.
But it might even itself out depending.
But you can take the reduction wherever you want to take the reduction.
Yeah, yes, you can.
That'll be up to the board. Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't have to be just-
Or you could just, or you can take money out of an account and pay it off.
Yes, you can. Or the other thing you can do is just take money out of-
Yeah.
I know some people like to send the check, check back to the state. But part of the problem with that is that it tends to appear that they're still giving you that same revenue amount.
Absolutely.
When in fact, you're just sending here, give us this money, we send it back to you. So, yes, probably what we would do, if you identified that you don't want the departments taking the cuts, we'd identify revenue source that either comes out of a reserve fund or out of the remaining balance here. And we would use that to offset the net reduction that the state's going to give for each one of those offices.
It could come out of contingencies.
It could come anywhere.
It's just, it could, yeah.
I mean, yeah, what, yeah, $400,000 as a contingency fund?
I don't know the balance right off the top of my head now. But, you know, at this point, yes, you, there, there's ways that we can address that if you do not want to take the expenditure reductions in those offices.
From the offices.
That's right.
Or take it from one and not the others. But that's not really a fair approach, you know?
Mr. Chair.
And at this point, we've not received any specific direction from the state about what we're going to do. We're just using our estimates from the last time and guessing what we think that number's going to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, one thing that, that would be helpful for staff, and I know the superintendent is here tonight as well, is is there, are there any, are there any actions under item one that Carol has listed there that the board would want to consider moving forward with? And/or have any questions that they want to follow up with the superintendent on? Or do you want to just continue to discuss this as a group at a later date?
Well, when we come out of work session, if we wanted to go ahead and do something with the first three, we can do so, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's-
And then that gives guidance to the schools, guidance to you guys about the pay supplement, and helps the fire and rescue people carry forward with their idea for capital.
And that's the reason we put addendum after the work session. Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
Well, I'll, I'll say where I am with those three at least, is that I think that the fire and rescue carry forward, I'd be in support of that. I, I would want to wait on the county employee bonus until we get more information about, since we've changed, or we seem to be, well, I seem to be wanting to see a little bit more information about the structure of that. And then that might impact the cost, it might not. I certainly do want to do the pay supplement and move forward, just not in its current, current form, if we can do that.
Sure.
And I would be in favor of, of okaying the, the, the schools' carry forward request, simply because it was part of their budget. That's, that, that was what was allocated.
Yeah.
But I will say as a rider to that, this isn't part of this, is that, be given our cash balance right now, our fund balance right now, I don't think I would support their additional $575,000 request. I think that personally, I think that I would want to see what the county departments wanted for their carry forward and fund some of that, as well set aside some money for revenue sharing for the roads. So that's where I am.
I would go along with about everything he said there. One thing I would like to add is some money for roads. That's, that's the remaining balance there.
Well, and that's why we have revenue sharing projects as the next work session item, so.
Chairman Brown, I, in regards to the 1.8 million dollars that was originally part of the school's budget, there can be a mentality, well, hey, we don't, we shouldn't save it because we're not going to get that money back. Well, they did save 1.8 million dollars. They did not spend that money. And you hear about different governmental agencies where the rollover money is taken away.
Oh, yeah.
And so in regards to that 1.8 million dollars, I understand that if they don't get the 575,000, that the numbers that Ms. Blackburn presented us might change. That board might get back and look at things and look at their priorities a little bit differently if, if all they get is the 1.8 million and not the 575,000. But I would be in favor of returning the 1.8 million dollars to their budget. As far as county employment supplements, since we're talking about changing that, then obviously that's something. And I'm in favor of putting the fire and rescue, so.
Couldn't, couldn't we just support a supplement and then get that worth and make a decision about the amount?
Well, I can make a suggestion to that. If, if you are in support of looking at these other options for a pay supplement, and you know that as a group you want to support the fire and rescue and the school carry forward amount of the 1.8, we can move forward, put the resolutions on for adoption for fire and rescue and the schools' carry forward for your approval at the next meeting. Then we can add a work session to bring you up to date with what we've come up with for the pay supplement options for you to look at. At the same time, on another course, we'll be moving forward with requesting county departments to then let us know what their requests are. But again, it will take them some time to put it together. And I'm just trying to frame out some things so we can move some things forward and then still be working on the other things you want to present to. You want more information presented to you.
Well, that's the essence of what I'm trying-
Right, it is.
Something to say.
Okay, Gary.
Just want to say, don't forget, I mentioned we need to talk about some of these roads out here that people are running on.
That probably works right into revenue sharing.
Number four.
Which I think's the next topic on the agenda. So if this is all right with you, we'll move forward with having resolutions for your approval for the fire and rescue carry forward and the schools' carry forward.
That's it.
We will send some instructions out to departments. It probably won't be 100% of their remaining funds, but to request, they have some ability to request funds to carry forward. So we'll be gathering that information. And then we'll work on your options for the pay supplement and have, bring something back to you all about those three, I heard three distinct items to work on.
And we're going to see how much each department has left over from-
Yes, I have that on the list to get for you. I, I know I have the spreadsheet. I just don't have one. Okay, revenue sharing.
Okay, before we move forward, do we need five minutes or somewhere for, right?
That'd be good.
Please.
Yeah. We're going to take, and, and try to keep it to five or six minutes so we can get back and get out of here. We will continue on with our, our work session. Before we move further, would it be possible that for the school requests to move forward, because of the time constraints and everything, would it be proper for us to take consensus to support the carryover funds request from the schools with it coming back two weeks from now for a formal vote and a resolution to support their, their requests? So that two weeks is a big time when you have the auto equipment and so forth. And at least if we give a consensus on how we're going to vote and support the school's request, that that will help Ms. Blackburn and her staff move forward.
And I, and I just want to mention one thing to that. Normally it is two weeks, but this, this time it'll be three weeks and a day because we've got, we've got the fifth Monday next week. And then-
Oh, that's right.
The normal meeting is on the 13th, which is Columbus Day, so it'll be on Tuesday, the 14th.
So you can see the urgency now to-
Could we meet briefly, could we meet briefly before the PSA meeting?
PSA, we could do it.
And which, which part of this line?
Just the school request.
$2 million?
The 1.7.
The 1.7, right?
1.7 is in that?
Yeah. We probably could, let me look to do, you're talking about to do the resolution, right?
Yeah.
Before the PSA meeting.
Before the PSA. And the PSA would be on the 6th of October. That would be two weeks. Yeah. And that would be two weeks.
That's fine. Even if we just met 10 minutes before.
Yeah, we could, we could make, meet at 6:50 just to download business.
We can't come out of work session and get that done.
Yeah, she needs it now.
We don't have a resolution preparative to vote on.
We don't have a resolution.
If we had a resolution, yeah, we'd be in great shape. But, but what I wanted to do is to-
Mr. King wants to know, can we have a resolution to do it now? Can you explain, like, we could legally do it now. There's nothing that's preventing us from doing it. But, but maybe some people would feel more comfortable if it's written out as a resolution. And then Ms. Blackburn, meanwhile, she needs some help knowing what to do. So I think what you were trying to say is just if we had consensus on doing it, what, we just hold up our thumb or something? Is that what you're thinking?
Right. Not formally, you can take a formal vote.
And then Matt was suggesting that we bring it back, like, before the PSA meeting, and, and that way it would be written out in a resolution and we could officially vote on it. And I think that resolves everything, right?
Yeah, we, we basically do consensus, sort of informally gives her the go-ahead.
Yeah. Yeah.
We back it up with the resolution before PSA meeting, if that's the wishes of everybody.
As I stated before, I'm in favor of returning that money to the schools. I would not be surprised if their budget changes. I think that we've talked about a lot of other things that the carryover money may be, and I hope the schools are not, at least from my perspective, counting on $575,000. But as far as rollover money on.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, consensus.
I'm okay.
Okay, unanimous.
I think now it's a matter of honor that we.
Yeah.
Both wanted.
We've given our thumb.
Yeah, we'll pass, we'll pass it at the.
Can we do the same thing on the progress?
Yeah.
If, if, if the urgency, we can do it, if you want to do them both.
Next.
We can do them before the PSA meeting, but I see the urgency for the school's carryover and the fire and rescue. It's going to lay there until a need, when we talk to the meeting.
Yeah.
But if you want to do both of them, that's fine. Whatever you want to do.
I'm fine with doing fire and rescue as well.
Okay.
If it's.
We'll have them on, we'll have them for you for a short meeting before the PSA on the 6th.
Okay. If we're through with that, can we move to revenue sharing projects?
Yes, thank you very much.
That's right, you ought to, you'd hate, ain't you?
Have you changed it since last week?
I added the, we were waiting on.
Six.
Oh, okay. Then this is.
Well, it's out.
Even if the media left.
Oh, no, they're just too boring for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a parent conference.
Yeah, it should be. But, well, the PSA is 7 o'clock, and so it, it should be, no, we probably can do it in like 6:45, 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me just mention what this paper is, I just handed out to you. At the last meeting, we were asked about what was the history of the funding for the revenue sharing monies, and which districts those were in. We were also asked about traffic counts on three roads. And I apologize, I forgot to bring the sheet with the traffic counts on it. I can remember two things. Prices Fork Road was 9,700. The other two roads, I believe, were less than 200.
Two.
But I don't have that exact, or less than 300, but I don't have that exact number with me. So by far, Prices Fork had more traffic counts, and I'll, I'll send you the sheet, I just forgot to make copies of it. Now, the sheet in front of you takes a 10-year look at revenue sharing projects the board has done, and this is based on our records. So I traced through the resolutions that the board had adopted, along with the transfers based on the resolutions that the board had passed. And that's where you get these amounts, and I separated those then by each district. Now, I would like to have gotten the information from VDOT on their records and reports to reconcile back to. We've requested that, but we haven't received it. So this is what was based on our records, and it's still pending reconciliation with VDOT. So that's just to explain what this sheet is.
I'll say about revenue sharing, that I, I think it is worth considering adding this as a line item in our ongoing budget, since we seem to do this every year anyway. So I'd like to consider that when budget season comes around in the spring. As for this coming year, I mean, I think we should allocate some of this fund balance to, to roads. I know we've traditionally done, at least since Chris and I have been on the board, have been $500,000, is that right? So I'd probably support that. And I think the Prices Fork project especially needs, needs our attention. And then maybe something smaller related to that.
I think you need a million dollars at least. Just make everybody feel like they're equal out there on these back roads. And if you think you're not made, you can pick out a road. You're 250,000 dollars per district, and made of it.
The other thing that's in the back of my mind when we're talking about these roads is Old Sourwood, and do we want to reserve some money?
To be a part of what that to be spent on.
And I know, but I just, thinking about reserving something back, and we may be not needed. I'm hopeful that, that will be resolved. But if it's not, as I said in meeting a couple of meetings back, this is our problem. Many times, there's a lot of problems that aren't ours and that get dumped on us, but this is one that is ours, and I would want us to be able to have a reserve to call upon to try to fix that. If, if we need it next spring, or if.
You can put it on a project, and if you don't need it, you can move it to another project.
Because VDOT is not open, don't hurt. What do you get, they go, it's going to take a while for them to get you lined up.
What was the amount we were thinking about for the Prices Fork project?
Yeah, how much does it cost?
Yeah.
Total estimate for that project has been plus or minus $2 million total.
So matching.
Million, million.
Could that neck, that could be spread out over multiple years?
Two years. Yeah, looking at two.
Two years, okay, so we'd have to do five of five. I'd be all right with that.
Maybe just some. Maybe maybe.
Well, I think that, you know, you sort of look down here and see where, where money has gone, and, and it needed to go there, okay, because of the roads. But one thing that we have going on at Prices Fork is, is a safety issue. And I know that, that's not to say there aren't safety issues in, in the other localities, but Prices Fork is, is really.
It's dangerous, I'll tell you.
It's dangerous, and I don't know, like, if you fix that particular road, do you do it in phases, or what do you do exactly to fix it? I mean, okay, it's going to cost, I get the cost part, but how do you, I mean, is there any way to, I don't know, make it?
Is that road?
It's dangerous.
Is that what you're going to do, try to put a four-lane road in there?
No, no, no. What happens, I believe, from right there at Brooksfield, this way from Brooksfield, maybe to, to pass McCoy in there, right through there. What happens is so much traffic traveling that road, and with people turning off to the, to the stores and to the Thomas Lane, and then of course, there's a lot of, of brands.
Yeah.
And then you have people who, who's impatient, that will go up in somebody's yard, on the side of yard, to go around the car in front of.
So you're talking about just widening that road?
Widening, and I think a, a, a left turn lane in the center to get the, if you can turn down Thomas Lane, if you got a lane you can get in, that less traffic.
Well, because I believe that you can get, you know, you need the check public, you can get the highway department to use maintenance funds for the biggest portion of that. It's just, it's worth asking.
They're putting some in, it ain't them and the developers, all right? Them and the developers both putting money into it.
Yeah. But we put that money in.
I think the, the, Texas Hall of Developers is going to have to give up some of the, maybe the frontage of the school that they, they bought to.
And they would contribute, we haven't negotiated that yet, but they'll contribute as part of the project as well, yes.
Has anybody asked VDOT if they have maintenance money that can be used in those?
They've basically told us, as we've talked to them about the Prices Fork project, that it would be a number of years before they would be doing that.
I think we need to go ahead and do it.
I mean, I, I'm not, again, I know that they, the difference is, you've got better roads, but they're faster roads. But they're cutting through there pretty quickly and quick. From what I've seen.
Well, what happened is, it's 45 a slot, and then just when you get there, back this way from the new school, it reduces to 35 all the way through there. At one time, I guess it was like no posted limit to 45, and then because of the, the increase in trafficking accidents, it dropped it to 35 through there. But, yeah, and still, I think you probably can go there, probably, if you pass through there seven, seven days a week, probably five out of those seven, you would see a deputy trying to enforce radar down through there, yeah.
I think the traffic count is pretty.
Yeah, it's like 9,700 for the traffic.
That must have been a slow, that must have been a slow day, if it's all like inside, yeah.
A lot of people in the driveway. And that's just fact. And so you're going to have to do something, but a lot of that, I cannot believe it, VDOT moved. There's some portion of that. It's a gang money.
Yeah.
Well, as Mr. Brown mentioned, I mean, if we allocate, if we put the money in the revenue sharing, we could always move it to another project with revenue sharing, correct?
Bill, can I ask a question, you know, when we had some folks out, and they were talking about they didn't want the road widened. At one time, there were several different landowners. And I'm just asking along those lines, do you think it's supported by the community to put the three lanes in there? And is that something that is going to be controversial for them? But is it the right thing for them, the community also, in the other term?
I don't, I don't believe it would be a controversial thing. They, they want to try to keep the village concept, and, and, but I think when, when safety is involved, you know. Now, what they'd really like is somebody to do something with Thomas Lane, you know, down through there, that's what they'd really like.
Another alternative.
Yeah, to that, to that. But I, I don't believe so. I believe the majority of the people would support it.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't know about, it's a certain property owner there, I don't think he would support any of that.
I understand.
They're supporting until they have a purse rack on it?
Yeah.
And then they, the rest of them.
Okay. Did we want to? This is based on the racket VDOT package.
Okay, where is, here, okay.
I guess what staff would look for in terms of consensus is, is there a dollar amount the board would agree to? And then I guess the second part of that is, how would you want that dollar amount allocated to the projects that have been discussed?
How much is your project going to need to be? How much is that project down there, Price Fork, how much will it? Probably over two-year period of time, about $2 million, a little over $2 million. And, and what happens is that a little over a million would come from the county, and a little over a million would come from the state in revenue sharing. But you could do it over, from what I understand from the county administrator, you could fund it over a two-year period of time, like maybe $500,000 this year and throw five at it next year.
Well, and the reason for that is, it's, it's going to take probably at least a year for design and right-of-way acquisition, if, if there's any right-of-way that needs to be acquired. One of the things, as we've looked at working with the Taylor-Holig Group too, is in some areas out there, the road width's already wide enough with the, with the shoulders, so there may not have to be a lot of additional right-of-way acquired, it may can be done within the existing roadway. But in talking to VDOT, they've said it could be done over two years, half, half the money the first year, half the money the second year.
Is that a half a million a match fund, or is that a match?
That's a half a million of, if you wanted to do it, it'd be a half million from the county, a half million from VDOT for year one, a half million from the county, a half million for VDOT for year two, for a total of $2 million.
So it's a half a million a match fund?
Yes.
What if we put aside $600,000, and then $500,000 go towards Prices Fork, and then we could look at traffic count and some of the other things to try to address some of the, the other issues? And I'm, I'm looking at more traffic counts and safety issues, whether it's my district, or whether it's Todd's, or whether it's Scares. Is that, you know, when we're looking at this rollover, that's more than we typically, $100,000 more than we typically do, but we also typically try to spread it around a little bit. But this is a bigger project, and it's going to affect more people, it's going to affect, you know, what's the traffic count, 9,000 cars a day potentially?
9,700.
Yeah, closer to 10.
That's a short.
Almost 10,000, yeah.
Mm-huh.
But, yeah, it's.
A lot of them are students.
Well, it's an economic development issue too, if you really want to put it bluntly.
Yeah. I would, I'd rather keep it to $500,000, though I'd be, I'd be okay with the $600,000. I think we should do the $500,000 for the Prices Fork, for the allocation of the $500,000 for revenue project.
Another, another thing that's, that's going to put a burden on that road, too, is when they moved the dairy farm down to White Thorne.
Yeah.
And with the equipment and, and everything that they take down off of.
That's true.
That's where everything's grown.
Virginia Tech. It's like going to town.
Would they want a revenue share with us?
If I could just.
I'll go and ask.
Mention that the revenue sharing application needs to be submitted to VDOT, I believe it's October 31st.
I was thinking November 15th.
No, it's, it's either November 1st or October 31st. And I believe before we submit the application, we have to get some cost estimates from VDOT about the roads that you want to include in revenue sharing. And I mention that because it won't be like you can just have.
Some money, yeah.
Yeah, you can just say, I want 500,000. They're going to be asking you to name what roads you want, and from what point to the next point. So sometime before October 31st, you'll need to define what those are, and we'll need to get those to VDOT so they can give you some cost estimates.
And, and I guess, is there a way, I know that you weren't able to bring some of the road counts, but to get a better idea and maybe have somebody from VDOT talk about the safety issues. There may be a terrible road in Gary's district that has to be, or Todd's district, or the line, or there may be.
Well, and the challenge there is, terrible's a relative term with VDOT, if you, I mean, they'll, they can, they can give you facts and figures, but they're not going to tell you.
Yeah, they're not going to say that our roads are terrible, I understand.
And for the road counts, I only had three roads on the list, Prices Fork, the one down next to Karen Waldron's farm.
Bonner's Run.
And what was the other one? For the life of me.
Mount Pleasant should be there somewhere.
Yeah, I'm thinking it was.
I had read that the board had mentioned from the last work session, and those are the only, and it may have been Mount Pleasant, yeah.
What's this road where we, we got all these emails from some lady about the safety down on?
Nostrom.
Is that, yeah, Lynn Nostrom, or whatever name?
Yeah, Lynn.
We got a lot of emails from.
That's, that's the one thing that you just spoke about, the rate of traffic is not near
what she said.
It's Craig's Mountain Road.
Oh, Craig's Mountain, yeah.
It's, it's, it's like way, way off, it's much lower.
Much slower than what it is there.
Yeah, the, there was a certain point-to-point in the distance that was measured there, and I'm not so sure it was where it was between Alex. Yeah, the, there was a certain point-to-point in the distance that was measured there, and I'm not so sure it was where it was between Ellis Road and Craig's Creek there. I'll just have to send you all the details.
I asked if the sheriff did it, he was gonna do it at the end of the highway, hard surface road.
That may very well be where it is.
That way you got a different thing from both sides, but it's...
Well, what should we, I mean, given the time limit, I mean, our next meeting would be middle of October, would that be enough time to get direction in order to get the application? Or do you really need direction now, and then we could just adopt the resolution at the next meeting?
I think probably we need to know what to send to VDOT to ask for the cost estimates, and then the next, the last meeting in the month would be the last time to adopt the resolution, so...
We've got two, we've got two more meetings.
Two more meetings.
Yeah, the last meeting of the month would be your last opportunity, you would have to adopt the resolution that would go with the application then. And sometime between now, which is the twenty-second, and I guess the next meeting, I'm not sure how long it takes VDOT to come up with their cost estimates.
I don't know that.
I don't know. Generally it does, but I know they need to have some role in doing the estimating on, for the amounts, because that's what you have to include on your application.
It seems like, maybe it was last year, that they had a sheet of several different projects that were potential for us to look at, and maybe I'm just...
I think that's, that's a six-year road plan.
A six-year road plan, and maybe we could utilize that as a...
We might still need to send it to VDOT.
Yeah. But at least that would give us a better idea.
Well, I'm not here another road, so maybe we should ask for the, the cost estimate for those three roads that we had talked about before. I mean, I'm all in favor of immediately allocating five-hundred thousand dollars towards Prices Fork, for that particular project, and then maybe, if there is some extra money.
If you was to then put another five-hundred thousand dollars between me and I, we'd have enough to do, each one of you made, it wouldn't be bad.
I'm not looking at that, I'm not, I'm not prepared to do that, and also looking at, I mean, looking at the historical allocation of the funds, and I understand it's, I mean, there's, there's many more unpaved roads, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done in both of your districts, but, you know, just looking at the road counts and what we need to prioritize here. Right now, I'm only comfortable with five-hundred thousand dollars for this. I would be happy to think about that, doing a lot more next year, but right now, I think personally, I'm only comfortable with five-hundred thousand dollars for, and maybe a little bit more, to get to, to do kind of some, some spot work in other districts, but, but right now, just, for me, it's only five-hundred thousand dollars.
Well, the thing of it is, is that you don't get much for spot work when you're talking to VDOT.
That's true.
Half a million dollars, and it don't even straighten out the curve on less than a, less than a mile road. I mean, it's pretty bad, but that's...
But, and looking at historically, though, that there was, and you start at the top, seventy thousand, ten thousand, sixty-two, thirty-seven, and yes, there's some big ones, two-thirty-four, but there's a lot of small, little projects that we might be able to address when you're, you're going down through there, and maybe address some of them.
Yeah, we got that, we got Bonner's Run down there that floods out every time it rains, we got all kinds of places down there to go, but you gotta have money to get there.
I know.
I still like to have extra, two-fifty for me and two-fifty for DOD.
Well, looking at this thing, so I mean, I, I understand that we're doing this, my district hasn't had anything...
That's right.
...in six years, I've got a lot of unpaved roads, but I'm, I'm willing to look at the road count and how it's gonna affect the whole county. I understand, you know, we, we've got some other needs throughout.
So, these, these, they yours have for Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant at one time was one complete thing that they, that VDOT was gonna do. Well, they cut it back and said that if we take tar and gravel, then they would give us another extra mile up the other way. Well, that's been like that ten years, as long as up here, and it just has not happened.
Right, and I know we, it looks like we've allocated for the two thousand fifteen budget, two-hundred fifty thousand for the Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, that's the one where they're just cutting the curve out of it, trying to... And then they're gonna go ahead and do some of the payment that they promised five, six years ago that they were wanting to do. That's all on them, they decided to hold up to their word, what they were gonna do so long ago.
And I misspoke, it was, it was four years ago, it was before I got on the board, two thousand ten yellow sulfur, I apologize.
And the yellow sulfur is yours, right?
Yes, I know, it's my, my district, and I, I misspoke, I think I said it's been six years, but it's only been four years since I've had...
And that was a pretty good amount of money to put on there.
It was.
It was a mess.
It's still a mess.
It's still a mess, yeah.
And it will be a mess for a long time.
Well, could we do, let me, let me get this straight, so like, if we were to put five-hundred thousand dollars towards Prices Fork and put another hundred thousand dollars in there, are you saying we'd actually have to take the hundred thousand dollars and list what we wanted fixed?
You have to, you do have to assign it.
So, everything would have to be cost, we'd have to have the cost for it?
I believe so, I don't, I'm not sure they're...
Not sure how to work it.
...for them.
Well, and to be honest, I don't, I, that's something I need to ask, too, because the last couple of years, you know, we didn't do any revenue sharing in fiscal year eleven or twelve, because, or thirteen, we basically said they're so far behind on the existing projects, but then in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, we put money towards projects that had already been approved, we were just adding additional funding to take a larger, a lot, an additional portion of those roads. I do think in order to add it to this, to the, to VDOT's project list, they do have to do a costing of what it would be. Because if the project, for example, is a million dollars, and you put a hundred thousand, and they say, well, you know, two hundred thousand's not gonna do it, so we're not gonna add it to the list.
Right.
Okay, rather than speculating, Vicky went and found the exact instructions here, so that's...
Oh, yay!
Rather than just guessing what they want, on, by, do October thirty-first, a detailed application for funds form for each project you wish to be considered for funding, and that has to go to your VDOT rep, a summary of projects form, a resolution outlining the projects. We will accept applications without a resolution, but will require it be submitted by December the first. Anticipated future request worksheet, oh, that's helpful, isn't it? See if I can find, we don't have the forms attached. So, we'll have to look at the detailed application, that's where I'm thinking you have to cite the road, exactly where it goes to, and it has to have a cost estimate with it.
When we have the meeting on the sixth to approve the resolutions on the previous funding, we can add a little time to that meeting for further discussion on projects, if that would be helpful.
Instead of six forty-five, we may have to back it up to...
Six thirty.
That's fine. How much you say I had on here, please?
What's the total? I didn't, I didn't, it was about eight hundred thousand, and yours and Todd's were pretty close, and mine was a few hundred thousand behind because of the yellow sulfur.
Actually, mine was one million five hundred thousand.
Was that?
One million five hundred thousand.
Now, was that total money?
Total money since back in nineteen oh six, two thousand six.
Right, but as far as county...
Seven million.
That's county money.
Right, no, county money is actually, in your district, eight hundred and fifty, fifty thousand, and then Todd's...
You might beat me on a lot of things, but you ain't gonna beat me there.
Well, no, no.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was done. Yep, here's two hundred and ninety-one and sixty-two, they argue with that.
Yep, that hadn't been done yet.
It's in, they are doing it.
I don't know if it's really, all right, I'm looking at two Cs, that's about...
I'm looking down here.
Yeah.
That's Mount Pleasant that they're gonna, or that they're attempting to do.
I don't know why he's looking.
Are you just talking about Mount Pleasant?
I'm talking, no, I'm talking about...
Because they're, they're totaled at the very bottom.
That's your view, sixty-two, sixty-two five.
They're totaled by district at the very bottom?
Oh, they haven't done it yet, okay, gotcha.
At, at the...
It's one million seven hundred.
That's the total, state, I mean, total and local.
Yeah, it's state and county, I agree, is one point seven, but the county dollars is eight fifty-seven, you are, your district has been number one, and then Todd's is, uh, looks like number two, and then I'm at five forty, number three, and then the Nets is number four.
And then Bill's is number five.
Yes.
And that and I are zero.
Yes.
Well, maybe we have to get more guardrail on or something.
Yeah, no, I'll save mine for the animal shelter, I need a road to the animal shelter. And mine is all on one road.
Craig's Creek Road, Craig's Creek Road, it's your road, don't worry.
It's Craig's Creek Road, all on one road. What's in Danny's road, it's a million dollars.
So, do we need, like, what, what do we need to do?
I, I've stated where, where I am.
Yeah, we're still in work session.
We still have work session, but, but, I think what, what Mr. Metta's saying is that, do we need to set some side, some time aside to discuss this first, further, prior to our PSA meeting?
And the new information would be, what, traffic counts and safety issues, or...
Traffic counts for what?
Those two other roads?
Two other roads, okay.
I think that's what we, and one of them is Mount, is Mount Pleasant, and I know for sure it's one of them. Decades.
It would be very helpful if the board could come to some consensus on the dollar amount that you're considering.
Yeah, I think five hundred, yes, don't do.
You okay with six hundred thousand?
I'm, I'm okay with six hundred thousand, and setting aside, in my mind, we're setting aside a half a million dollars for Prices Fork, and a hundred thousand dollars for some other projects to try to address the most important and pressing needs.
I would be okay with that.
What is a hundred thousand dollars gonna buy you?
We're gonna talk about it in two weeks, I don't know, it may not buy us much.
You support, you support what he said, six hundred thousand dollars? You support, uh, six hundred, okay, we can get past this issue.
We'll try and see what happens.
Okay. Getting late, folks, uh, no other questions on revenue sharing, we'll move to number five, Shawesville Middle School property agreement.
Mr. Chair, we just had that on work session tonight for further discussion among the board, you heard a presentation at the last meeting about Mountain Valley Charitable Foundation, their willingness to assume all responsibilities for the Shawesville Middle School property, should the county accept that property?
Do we have any assurance, oh, you got something? When they take that property, that nothing out of there will fall back on our parks and recreation responsibility? I mean, what I'm saying is that...
Bill, I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat, I couldn't hear.
Okay, when it comes back to, I know we talked about the agreement, we talked about Mountain Valley Charitable taking over and things like this, but do we have any assurances that, with that piece of property down there, nothing would fall back on our Department of Parks and Rec? I mean, what I'm saying is that they're, they're spread thin now, and to make sure that they wouldn't end up down there mowing trash, mowing grass, and, and so forth.
Well, I think that's what the document, the issues of concern that are raised, I, I was just gonna ask, has this been shared with Mountain Valley?
It has not, and basically, let me, I'm sorry, I had to go get water before I strangled the death, but I put this together because what I wanted to do is make sure that we're all on the same page about what they're gonna do, and what we're not gonna do, or not be able to do, and what is actually gonna transpire, and that we get on the same page here before we put an agreement together, and so that, my thought was, is, I wanted to go over a, a little bit about what the things are that were not included in their letter, what was included in their letter that we're not gonna be able to accommodate, and some other things that need to be done so that we all know what we're asking of them, they know what we're asking of them, they know what we're prepared to do or not to do. With that, we would go back and share in a letter or a communication with Mountain Valley, here are the things that, that are gonna need to be done, are you prepared to do those? And then from there, if they're in agreement, we draft an actual agreement between the county and Mountain Valley, but at this point, I don't think we're there yet because their letter was certainly indicating that they would support handling everything, but I wanted to make sure we spelled out what everything actually meant.
For some reason, I thought that they, they needed help with the mowing.
Yes, and that's one of the things we wouldn't be able to do, I don't know if you all know it or not, but we're currently paying subcontractors or contractors to cut grass in the surplus school buildings we currently have.
Well, the surplus school buildings, economic development properties, we, we don't have staff to maintain what we've got.
And I know it's late, but I was over in Giles County, and they were talking again about the inmate labor force that is used to do all their mowing. And I know that that is a cost, but they're using inmates from the New River Valley Regional Jail on a regular basis to do landscaping around the courthouse, but all their mowing, county mowing, and doing those things. Now, I know there's some controversy with doing that, but to me, this is a chance to get some ball fields that apparently we need down that way, but we gotta figure out a way to pay for some mowing, it sounds like, 'cause that was the only thing out of this list that they...
Well, let me go through the list, 'cause there's a number of things here, because, I mean, Parks and Rec is short-staffed as it is, so they're not gonna be able to pick it up. General Services doesn't have anybody to pick up the mowing either, or Parks and Rec can't, I mean, there's just not enough bodies to, to take care of what they have now, and there's just not the ability to absorb some more, so when you're talking about what needs to get done, I just wanna make sure we all understand that because there's also a report that was done by the schools, and I have it, it's in this notebook, it goes through every single poll out there, and it basically says, well, most of them are okay, they're...
For now, for now.
For now, but, and they identify some of them that you need to do some things to. There's also several of them that they talk about need to be reassessed in a year, and then the majority of them need to be looked at in three years because they talk about they are old, and things could happen between then, so there's some maintenance stuff related to recommendations in this report, and I'll be glad to give the report to anybody who wants to look at it or share it if you want, it's a large collection of pictures of every light pole out there, actually. So, that's the issue about what to do with the maintenance of, of those poles. The mowing, it would have to be addressed, I mean, we don't have the resources to continue to take that on for, and like I said, we're paying a contractor to do the, there's several school properties now. Assume all responsibility for the maintenance and the upkeep of the associated facilities and the property, and they describe that in their letter. They, there's trash pickup that needs to be handled, and they would need to accommodate that. There would need to be a telephone number to call to schedule the use of the facility and/or to register complaints. I mean, you, generally, if you have a facility, you're gonna get people who call complaining this or that needs to be done, and there needs to be a number that they would... I mean, you, generally, if you have a facility, you're gonna get people who call complaining this or that needs to be done, and there needs to be a number that they would call, because inevitably, they end up calling the county, and then we need somewhere to tell them to call. They need to accommodate, and I think they indicated they would here at the meeting, the property and liability insurance, and the county would need to be named insured. The Parks and Rec department uses the football field six weeks out of the year for practice, they would, we would like for them to have priority to continue to do that, and they would schedule the use of that with the foundation. Again, the schools would be allowed the limited use when needed, as identified in their resolution of August the fifth, and the county basically would not have responsibilities of that facility.
Can I start with a question?
Yeah.
Number seven, the Parks and Recreation Department will be given priority. What happened to the fact that they said they never use it anymore?
They use it six weeks for a football practice. They're using it this year, six weeks for a practice field.
According to when they were getting the numbers down, down on the other one, I tossed to the director, and he said that they absolutely didn't use it anymore.
Well, this year, they have seven teams, so they're using it for practice for six weeks.
Maybe in prior years, they had less teams than they have more teams this year, I guess.
I don't know, I don't know, don't know if they did.
I don't, I don't know either, but I, I know that they didn't use it up until, if they're using it this year, it would be their first year in many, and maybe it's because they think it's gonna go away or something, no. And I guess the next question would be, if I was asking questions, and I am, uh, if they're gonna use it, whether they, other people keep it up or not, who's gonna pay for the mowing?
Uh, you're talking about six weeks out of the entire year, or entire, or whatever?
Well, unless they come up with, um, as they switch seasons, I would assume that they're gonna have more people come in there. It would, it would absolutely change, I mean, that just makes sense, you know, if you got a place that's working.
The majority of, well, their games, their official games are held at Eastern Montgomery High School, and so what they're, I'm told, they are using it for now is for six weeks, so a team will have a practice field, and everything else, they've scheduled at Eastmont High School.
Even Shawesville Middle School doesn't have a team.
Right, comments, you got more questions?
Well, y'all go ahead, I'll, I'll catch you on the backside.
Questions?
I guess I, I'm just confused. I, I've always thought that there was a need for ball fields in, in that area, and maybe I'm, I'm just confused, but it sounds like we're using it for six weeks. Is there, if, and do we just not have the demand down there, other than the six weeks for additional ball fields, at this point in time?
Well, I, I think we discussed before about the importance of the baseball fields, that we've made a significant investment at behind Shawesville Elementary School.
Elementary School.
And that the potential for that being, um, expanded.
Question. They also said they did not use the baseball fields down there, that, we have a very nice baseball field down there. Parks and Rec has an absolute, we do not use that, and they still do not use that, as of today, unless...
Then why are we keeping this? I thought we needed the ball fields.
At Shawesville Elementary.
At the elementary school, where we already have a couple.
Yeah, it's confusing.
They're using it in the middle school.
But don't we, I mean, it's what, a quarter mile, half a mile away from each other, I don't, I, I'm, I'm thinking that these are, this baseball field, it's already level, it's already there, and if we need these things, but if we don't, and we're not using them, and there's not expansion, there's not demand for lacrosse or soccer, because, you know, if, if this is not being used as a ball field, it's still level, uh, you could, you could use it for soccer, um, or whatever sports we need.
I think they've actually gotten to where they use the soccer down at the old elementary school. I think that's where the soccer is going.
Why are we selling this?
And I guess, I mean, I think you're asking two separate questions. What are they using it for now, and what is the need in the future? Well, those are two different things, and in terms of where we are right now, we don't have the people to maintain anything else now, or the staff to program it actually.
And, and what had been discussed as well, with regard to the old Shawesville Elementary School, was a discussion about trying to build a larger complex, to have everything in one area, not to have it...
Spread out.
Spread out. That was, because, yes, if there were more fields, they would be utilized. I mean, that's the reason we were talking about the old elementary school property.
But if you have more fields...
You have to have more people.
You've got to have more maintenance people, and you have to have more program people. Right now, we're running solo on program people, we can't get them from one end of the county to the other, and so if you, if you build them, they'll come, and then you've got to have some people to do that with, and we don't have them now.
Yes, Miss...
And talking to some people from, from that area, um, and Gary would know this better than I do, um, even the schools down there, like the middle school, they don't have any football teams. Their kids go up and play at Eastern Montgomery.
Oh, right, they don't, yes.
All right, so next year, I understand, they're really looking toward having some middle school football, and therefore, it's gonna be divided up even more between the schools and the Parks and Rec people. Also, my son, grandson plays lacrosse, and I went this summer to see, and, and he lives in Roanoke County, and they played, um, a team from Pennsylvania, and they played it at the Shawesville Middle School, where the football stadium is. So, I know that there are people using it outside of Parks and Recs, and, in our county, and also...
Yes, there are, and that's the reason we were specifying needing someone, so these people can call, because there are outside organizations that ask to use those facilities. I know that lacrosse is one of them, I don't know how many others there are.
You know, and, and the strange thing about it is somebody has been paying to use those fields, and they've been paying, okay, I can get you the man's name, that is paying for the school out here to come down there and use the fields that belong to us, not the schools, but belong to us, that baseball field. There's use of them, we're just not getting the funds, and somebody else is.
I, we are not getting the funds, I don't know who, I don't know who they're paying. I assume it would have to be the schools, because we didn't even know we owned the baseball field for a few weeks.
It was either the schools or the parks.
Maybe, I know it's not Parks and Rec, I don't know that's...
Okay, Matt.
Can I just ask a, just clarification, is that, so, if I'm understanding you correctly, is that this property that we're talking about right now, is that the major issue's not necessarily demand, it's simply staffing? Is that we don't, if we had, for example, if Parks and Rec had more staff to maintain the facilities and program it, that we have the sense, the county has a sense, that those fields would be utilized by Parks and Rec?
I know they are utilized now by outside organizations, that being lacrosse, there may be a soccer organization, I don't know that. For Parks and Rec, they are currently using the football field at the high school, and they're using this one for practice. Now, is the question, will there be more demand in the future for the use of a football field? I don't know, maybe, but currently taking on, I guess, uh, the issue at this point is taking on another property with facilities on it increases the maintenance demand, as well as what do, what's your expectation of what occurs there? I mean, somebody's gotta schedule, even if it's outside organizations, somebody's gotta keep a schedule, somebody's gotta know who's gonna be there, somebody's gotta be available to take the phone calls, somebody's gotta pick up the trash, and that's why this is outlined here, because if, if we, if the other property's gonna be used, and I understood that Mountain Valley was gonna, well, they indicated they would handle the property, and there's specific things they need to, to be doing, and I just wanna make sure that they're, understand that.
And that's probably what we need to do, is send them a letter and say, here's what you've got to do, if you want that property.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's the whole reason, yeah.
You know, because, I'll tell you, somebody else uses that property, and they use it because they have no other place to go, and that's every cheerleader of every sport down there comes up to that school and uses it. Now, I know you'll find some people said, we don't use it, but they use it, and I tell you, I think they picture them.
But the school's surplusing this property, that's their, their goal, they want, they've already done, that's right, they've surplus the property, then if we don't utilize, take it in, we just put it up for sale?
Well, it, the, the schools have declared the property surplus. The county has to accept that decision, they, you know, that's the first, you can say, schools, that's fine, you surplused it, we don't have a use for it, so you continue to maintain it and keep it. If we do accept it, then the question that we've been discussing as staff becomes, if we accept it, then if we're expected to maintain it and program it, then we've got some real challenges. Then Mountain Valley came forward and said, look, we'll take responsibility for it, and staff in the discussion we've had has said, that's great, because if we take on any additional property, whether it's through construction at another place, or acceptance of this, we've got to have more staff to handle it. We don't have enough to cover what we're trying to do.
And I think the other thing that Mountain Valley mentioned was that there were community organizations that use the facility, and because of that is the reason they came forward to support it, is be, in support of the community organizations that were using it was part of the reason, I think, that they were willing to step, step up.
I think we need to lay it on their back and say, here, here it is, if you want it, you've gotta do this, this, and that. But, you know, every time I think about one thing, they're gonna...
But as a foundation...
I mean, we hadn't accepted the property yet, right? Right, that's the reason why I still think Mountain Valley ought to deal directly with the schools who own the property and leave us out of it. We own a little piece of it, a ball field, let them work with the schools, and, uh, because...
Well, you know, the schools have said that they, there's one thing that they use that field for, and that's for evacuation.
They drill, fire drills and stuff like that, evacuate the school.
During the week, that field don't get used, and that's a fact, you know, up until the school's out.
So, can we turn the ball field over to the schools?
No, we have a piece of it.
No, I know, can we turn that over to the, because I, I think the idea was that the Mountain Valley would take control of the whole, the whole park.
But they can have a separate one with us on our ball field, and the rest of it with the schools. I'm, I'm just this way, is that if you're gonna take the project on, take the project on, but don't have us mixing in it by mowing us, emptying the trash, or doing anything like that. If you're familiar with our Parks and Recreation Department, they are spread thin. I mean, if you're spreading butter on toast, you wouldn't even see the butter on the toast, you wouldn't even see the grease spot, that's how thin that they are, and, uh...
I think we need to, really, really need to let these people take it and come up with it, and I think you could even put a, I know at one time, the, what I had went down and they talked to me, was that, you know, even if they wanted, if the county wanted to put a one-time, uh, date on it, within that first five years, that they wanted them out for whatever reason, they could get out, they, they would have to get out. Or if they wanted out, then they would tell the county, if you give them two years' notice, that in two years, we won't out. I, I don't know whether they put that in there or not, that's something they were talking about.
I don't have a problem with them managing the property or anything like that. I mean, not, I think it's a great idea, I mean, it's wonderful to show how schools and, 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 and areas can work together. I just don't want it to come back to bite us. What I'm saying is, biting us, it's like, if people complain about this and that, they're gonna call here to the county, instead of calling to Mountain Valley, and say, we don't have anything to do with it, but it's, it's school property, ain't it, y'all ought to have something to do with it.
I don't think, Mountain Valley is a very, very class operation.
It is, that's the reason why I think they can handle it. I'll buy them say it. Well, why don't we see if they would go through the schools, instead of putting us in on it?
Well, I, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Seems like to me, that, I agree with you, if they're gonna take over the whole thing, the foundation will take it over and operate it, just as if, you know, it's in charge. What, all these things that would be done, trash collection, or some other things, would be part of contracts that they would have with people who were using it, right?
Well, I think our intent was, if, if the board so chose to accept this property from the schools, and then enter into an agreement with Mountain Valley, that we would outline in our agreement with Mountain Valley, that these things would be what they would accommodate.
A part of that, yes.
Um, and, yes, Mr. Creed, they did indicate in their letter with the foundation, that it would be for a period of five years, you know, and, and then could be reevaluated after that, but I think from the standpoint of setting, um, you know, a timeframe, I don't recall from their letter if they said specifically a, a date, but certainly that could be incorporated in any agreement that said, with so much notice, either party could get out, and I'm sure they would want that, and whatever they...
They said after five, they could have the option during the fourth or...
Right, I just don't know, within the five years of termination clause, then certainly everybody would want that, but...
I think our primary purpose in accepting surplus property is to sell it, to put it back on the tax rolls, and I don't think that if we accept this and leave it out there, uh, it, it, it doesn't serve our purpose unless we plan to do something with it. And then, I guess, if we do accept it, will the schools be expecting us to pay something for it, if they continue to use it? You know, we're gonna do something with Shawesville Elementary School, because we already have some investment in that property with some ball fields down there, to expand that. But when it comes to this other piece here, I think that, well, my thoughts are, we accept surplus property from the schools for one primary reason, to sell and put them back on the tax rolls.
How you gonna sell it if they use it for, uh...
If they give it to us, they have to find somewhere else to, if I had anything to do with it, they'd have to find somewhere else to use.
They, they, they can't...
I mean, school would find somewhere to use it.
They can't have a school, they can't have a fire drill and use that field if somebody else owns it.
Then the schools need to keep it.
No, just, they wouldn't have a fire drill except when school's insufficient.
That's what I'm saying.
But schools need to keep it. We were talking about massive evacuation in case of a...
Bomb threat or something like that, I guess. They don't have nowhere else to go.
Fields aren't used then.
And school ought not get rid of that property. Yeah, school needs that property. They need to keep it.
Well, no, these other people have a guarantee that they will have the right to use.
Yeah, school, they need the property, but Mountain Valley needs the contract. If you have nowhere to evacuate, you got no business getting rid of it.
Well, you're not getting rid of this, it's...
Well, maybe this will help. The reason that schools wanted to get rid of the piece of property in the first place is because of the maintenance issues involved. They, they, they knew that work was gonna have to be put in to make it safe, and they felt like it was a safety hazard, and so they, they wanted to get rid of it, you know, they didn't want to, or at least that was my understanding, because of all these different things, okay? So, they, they didn't know about somebody coming along and wanting to, you know, to do something with it. So, maybe if, you know, like, if we're thinking in that vein, I mean, maybe it would be, um, a good idea to go back and ask, like, could, like, what Todd, I guess, and Bill are saying, and people, could the schools work with this group?
But, you know, where do the schools get their funding? It's from us.
It's from us, and then I...
But there's not supposed to be any money spent. This, this organization is supposed to take care of everything.
Why not have them make the money for five years, anything you wanna get them out of it?
What happens three years down the road, three light poles need to be... What happens three years down the road, three light poles need to be replaced. Mountain Valley going to replace them or the county going to replace them?
They'll have to replace them or they'll have to play them the day they like.
Yeah. I mean, those poles, when they were inspected, and I guess, oh yeah, they're good and everything, but it's cracks in them, you stick ink pens in.
Well, there is a narrow pole up and down the road if you don't look at it.
But I think we take on, and I don't know what it costs to replace them or whatever.
A lot.
Yeah.
It costs a lot because I did a fair penny for them.
It costs big bucks to replace light poles, that's the light.
I think it's fine to ask the schools to talk to Mountain Valley, that's fine. I mean, we might have to, if the schools don't want to deal with them, then we're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with them.
Yeah, that's right.
But I would simply point out as my, my closing statement regarding this at least is simply that I think what we're pointing out is that we need to do something about Parks and Rec, is that we are a rapidly expanding county, wants to expand both offerings and facilities and we don't have enough to cover what we got.
Right.
And we've been talking about it for three years and we haven't done anything about it, so.
And, you know, Matt, it goes to the whole point of the quality of life and bringing people in here and jobs and economic development. You've got to have a good Parks and Rec department.
It's just part of the business with children.
Okay. We beat number five there, if y'all want to beat it a little bit more, we can.
Well, how would, how would we go back about asking if the schools wanted to do something, if we wanted them to do that?
We have a liaison meeting next Thursday.
Well, that's going to be something on the agenda too, right?
And you still got a baseball field on your own.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we got that little piece down there.
Now who's going to get to take care of that once you put the other off?
Well, we can probably find, have a small contract with somebody or an offshoot of Mountain Valley says two, said you have two, you enter in one with the schools, you enter in one with us on that ball field.
I'm so tired.
It can work.
Yeah, I don't think that would work.
Any other thing while we get to work session?
Move, we go to our work session.
Motion in a second, the clerk, please call and roll.
Mr. Todd?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Mr. Cruz?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Ms. Fitz?
Hi.
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Chair.
Ah, we don't have an addendum to add, do we?
No, sir.
Okay, moving right along. New business, ordinance establishing a deadline for application.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Oh, man, something like.
So moved consent agenda.
That's about mine, don't be arguing. Okay, consent agenda, so moved.
Yes, second.
Have a motion in a second, the clerk, please call and roll.
Mr. Creed?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Ms. Fitz?
Hi.
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Mr. Todd?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Chair.
Hi.
Sit down.
Okay, okay, can I go to new business now?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance establishing a deadline for application for appeals, Board of Equalization, B, establish compensation for the Board of Equalization, Second Amendment to the Form of Prices for Road and Real Estate and Sales Agreement, Resolution appropriating $200 to the League of Women Voters, 2015 publication of the Facts for Voters.
So you're proposing to take all new businesses as one item, is that?
No, we can do them one at a time. I just read them all.
I'll make a motion that we take them all together.
We can take, I mean, it's up to this board if you want to take them all together.
I'll make a motion that we take them all together.
Um.
Marty, can we do that?
That would be a consent agenda.
Okay. Why don't we just take them all?
We'll take them, we'll take them one at a time.
Do Marty says one at a time.
A little approval of the first ordinance establishing the application deadline for appeals.
Any discussion? Motion in a second, would the clerk, please call and roll?
Mr. King?
Hi.
Ms. Fitz?
Hi.
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Mr. Todd?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Hi.
Chair.
Hi.
Sit down.
B, establish compensation for the Board of Equalization.
Second, third.
Okay, have a second and a motion, would the clerk, please call and roll?
Ms. Fitz?
Hi.
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Mr. Todd?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Chair.
Hi.
Sit down.
C, Second Amendment to the Form of Prices for Elementary School, Real Estate and Sales Agreement.
So moved.
Say.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Yeah, can I actually just ask for clarification on this? The deadline's being pushed back, can you explain why?
Yeah, the reason it's being pushed back to December 1 in order that we work out the prices for improvements.
Oh, okay.
We need to determine.
Specific to that, that's the last remaining thing.
Okay.
Motion, motion in a second, would the clerk, please call and roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Mr. Todd?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Ms. Fitz?
Hi.
Chair.
Hi.
Resolution appropriating $200 to the League of Women Voters, 2015 publication of the Facts for Voters. Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Clerk, please call and roll.
Mr. Todd?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Ms. Fitz?
Hi.
Ms. Perkins?
Hi.
Chair.
Hi.
Sit down.
Moving right into the county attorney's report.
I got like five or six items.
For us next week or what?
Sure, that's mine.
I have nothing. County administrator's report.
The only thing this evening is don't forget our county conversations meeting next Tuesday night, which is September 30th at 7 o'clock at Eastern Montgomery High School.
Okay. Board of Supervisors reports, okay. I think I lost part of my agenda. We just start with Mr. Creed over there until I found the right one. Okay.
Well, that works out because you're, those two were first in.
All right. Okay, Mr. King, I mean, I'll get to the right agenda.
No.
Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, just, I wanted you to know that Ms. Franklin called me, Penny Franklin, and she want, she and Andy Markar are interested in reestablishing the Human Relations Council, which our board set up years ago, and they just wanted to know if we were still behind that as far as it being a council and that, and having a money source, I think it's $1,500 a year, although right now they don't need money. And if they get it going again, maybe having one of us be a liaison to it, so I said, bring it up. And also, they want to come later on as a delegation to talk about ban the box, you know, the box sits on applications about if you've ever been convicted of a felony or whatever. They want to talk to us about that, but that would be later on in October or November. So that's all I have for that. But then I wanted to ask Marty, can you get a copy of what they were talking about tonight? The state of Virginia policy on pipelines crossing, crossing, what did I write down here?
Highways.
Oh, our, crossing our land, but the cars. They said that there's a state of Virginia policy that says you're not supposed to do that. I'd like to see that in writing. And also, what are they talking about? The Augusta County Emergency Services Plan?
I wrote that down.
And car terrain. Like, can we get a copy of those two things some way?
Yeah, well, I'll look, see if there really is one.
Okay, thanks. All right, and I'll.
Supervisor Perkins.
Well, there were several things I was going to bring up, but I'm not, except to say I did go the fair few home again. And that was quite a nice meeting. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Todd?
I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with the Sheriff's Department in regards to body cameras. And many of you probably don't know that our new public safety building is, if you're, it's going to be designed and they're going to already have the computers in the building that, but we need body cameras and we need in-car cameras. So when they pull up in the parking lot, we're already ready for immediately downloading, go into a mainframe. And so, but there is a cost for the body cameras and I would not be surprised if we see the Sheriff's Department coming forward to looking for some funding. And we're not talking about a couple of thousand dollars, we're talking about over a hundred thousand dollars. But I do think it is money well spent. It protects the officers in many of the cases and it is, I think, an excellent tool for the police and transparency as far as the police work goes. And so it's something I hope that we would consider as a board when they make that presentation or they ask for funds in regards to body cameras.
Chris, tell them why it's still important to have the car camera too. There's a reason for that.
It is, because a couple, there's a lot of different reasons. One is for probable cause purposes. Your body camera is not going to be on or all you're going to see is a steering wheel. But when you're looking at the car and determining why you're pulling them over, well, they're weaving. Well, that's not a body camera issue, that's going to be an in-car camera issue. And again, we're going to have the software where it's automatically going to be able to be loaded up. I watched several demonstrations and there is the capabilities of even a supervisor wanting to check and say, where is Matt working at today? And being able to pull up his in-car camera and being able to see where he was at while I'm supervising. And that could be the very important tool in high school chases and the like. And so there's a lot of different uses that are available. And like I said, it was a very informative presentation. I wasn't able to stay for the entire amount, but I'm hopeful that it's something that we'll at least consider.
Yeah, just kind of going off that, something I think I would, I would really like to see implemented in the county. So I look forward to hearing more about that. Just to let you know, I have the EDC and the tourism meetings on Thursday, so I'll have more on that next week, our next meeting. The only other question I had is that, I was curious about, you mentioned the school liaison meeting and that reminded me to ask that, have there been regular meetings between the schools?
Nope.
Not at all? And is there a reason for that?
Well, basically because the chairs in California have the school board and for some reason, I'm not exactly sure why the vice chair or why they didn't, but we decided to go ahead and.
When was the last time that, I mean, have there been any meetings between?
We have been out.
We had one two months ago, yeah.
Yeah, seems like it was the beginning of school.
Okay. I think in the future, as a board member, I would like to know that, for one, if these meetings are being canceled then, because I was also talking with some members of the school board and they didn't know that those meetings were being canceled. So there's no, and I know that, you know, the county administrator and the superintendent are speaking, but there were, one of the things we've talked about a lot is communication between the board and we had that miscommunication in which it was, a mistake was made and they thought that we had asked to cancel that joint meeting, which we actually didn't. And then to find out too, that liaisons aren't even meeting, I mean, that's, that's not good. I'm not, I'm not really happy about that at all. So I think in the future, perhaps the superintendent might remind her board as well to inform them that the liaison, that the, if the chair is not honestly fulfilling his duties right now, then the vice chair could perhaps step into that role and take.
It would, and I agree with you, Matt, it would sort of be, would be good for the vice chair to attend the meeting. So I don't know how long, when is going to be working out of town, but it's been quite a while.
It's been a while, yeah.
And, but even, and sometimes we've tried to hook him up with a conference call.
Sure.
To the meetings. But if you had the vice chair there, the meeting could go along, right along and we could make some progress.
Even if they designated someone from the rest of the board who's around just to attend and then report back to their board, that would be fine. So hopefully that will be addressed soon.
Well, I agree with you. I think you make, make a good point and I, and I apologize for our part of it in not telling you guys we weren't having a meeting. I guess that was our fault and we should have made that clear that we weren't having a meeting, when we weren't having a meeting.
That it, yeah. Okay. Wonderful. Ideal supervisor, Todd, and I support body cameras and so forth. But there's still some, need to be some further research on them to, to measure heart rate of the officer, the fear factor and so forth. It measures everything what the defendant is doing, but it don't really measure what's going on with the officer themselves, you know, just like, my heart is pounding, about to beat out of my chest. People don't measure that. I'm in fear of my life. It don't measure that, okay? Let me move on. The first thing that I have is that I received a letter last week that the Prices for Historical District, they wanted the, people in Prices for in that area wanted the whole nine or 10 acres out there incorporated in their historical district. And they had a hearing, I guess, back in, during the summer and the people from Department of Historical Resources came and they had that hearing. But what they did, the front part of the school, what he's working on now, is in the historical boundary now, but the other part is not. Have a flyer or two from Christiansburg Rescue Squad, their semi-annual spaghetti dinner is Friday, October 3rd from 4:30 to 7:30 at Christiansburg High School. Adult dinners are $8 and children are $5. And all donations to the sponsor, to sponsor their Relay for Life team and all rec football players get in for $2 if they wear the jersey and they will deliver. Had an opportunity to have a conversation with Judge Turk Friday. We had a, we started out with a casual conversation because we've known each other for years and things like that. And we got to talking about the need for handicap parking. He says we're ADA compliant right now, but where we got this little building on the corner, the old cab stand or whatever, he said that would be a perfect spot for handicap parking. I've been in the courts over there where a lady had pushed a gentleman from back down here in the parking lot, pushed him into the courthouse. And when the lady gets in, she looked like she needed a wheelchair instead of the guy that she was pushing. And so maybe that's something that we can look at, demolishing that building and putting in some handicapped parking. We also got to talking about our numbers in the, in the regional jail. I happened to see an email from Matt talking about our numbers in the regional jail and been on the jail authority. I know our numbers are way up there, but Judge Turk said he had that heard about that. He's looked at what he's done and he hadn't changed anything than what he was doing in the past. Now, as we talked on, and I said, you don't think that open up the new courthouse versus the old courthouse with the open of the courtrooms that they're processing them much faster or getting them through the courts much faster? Could be, probably could be contributed to them. But whatever he said, he said he would be more than welcome to sit down and talk with any one of us about that. And I thought that was great, that he's willing to converse with us on his thoughts and so forth. Last thing is that here's a plaque that's, that was to Mr. Matt as an honor of 25 years of local government service, is recognized for the significant contributions, achievements and advancements local government administration presented at the 100 IMC Annual Conference in Charlotte Mecklenburg County on September 17. And, I mean, in this day and age, it's a five, 25 years in local government. You're doing good.
Thank you, sir.
Have you had your heart checked, three?
Yeah.
Not recently.
Or my head.
On your head?
No.
Yay!
No other business? We're going to adjourn.
Yay!
You must have good genes.
It's led me close.